Good evening. As Mayor, I call this electronic communications meeting of Stanton City Council to order. I note that this meeting is being convened with City Council members using the Zoom platform, broadcast over the city's cable channel, and streamed live on the city's website so that members of the public may hear our meeting. The meeting is also being recorded. At this time, I ask the clerk of council to call the roll for confirmation of those council members present for today's meeting. Ms. Simmons?
Mayor Doll.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kyer.
Here.
Ms. Oaks.
Here.
Dr. Harrington.
Here.
Ms. Mead.
Here.
Dr. Curran.
Here.
Mr. Holmes. He has still not joined the meeting. All other members are present.
All right, thanks. I ask that City Manager Steve Rosenberg now identify his location and those city officials or colleagues, if any, present with him at that location, and the participation of anyone else during today's meeting by Zoom or telephone.
Madam Mayor and members of council, I am participating in the meeting on the Zoom platform from my residence in Stanton. There is no one with me at this location. We have a full roster of other city employees participating on the Zoom platform this evening at various times during both the work session and the regular meeting. They include Faith Simmons, Clerk of Council, Leslie Beauregard, Assistant City Manager, Doug Gwynne, City Attorney, Phil Trayer, Chief Finance Officer, Billy Vaughn, Community Development and Economic Development Director, Cheryl Wagner, Tourism Director, Rodney Rhodes, Senior Planner, Tim Hartless, City Planner, Charlie Haney, City Assessor, Jim Williams, Police Chief, Scott Garber, Fire Chief, Perry Weller, Deputy Fire Chief, and Rick Johnson, City Treasurer. In addition, I anticipate participation by Greg Bean, the Executive Director of the Stanton Downtown Development Association. And as was the case during your last meeting, the three council members elect are joining as attendees. So they are watching the video feed and receiving the audio feed on the Zoom platform. And those attendees include Steve Claffey, Amy Darby, and Mark Robertson. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Please let me mention that notice reasonable under the circumstances of the electronic communications nature of this meeting has been given to the public contemporaneously with the notice provided to members of City Council. This meeting has also been publicized over the course of the past week on the city's website and Facebook page. Access to this meeting has been provided to the public by audio feed on the city's cable channel and the city's website. During this work session, as in the past, there will be no opportunity for public comment. Public comment will be received during council's regular meeting, which will begin at 7:30 PM. Instructions for public comment can be found on the agenda for the regular meeting and on council's website at www.ci.stanton.vaa.us/government/city-council. Also, let me highlight and have reflected in the meeting minutes that this meeting is being conducted by Zoom, given the catastrophic nature of the declared emergency and disaster related to the COVID-19 outbreak, which as part of the total circumstances makes it impracticable or unsafe to assemble a quorum in a single location. The meeting is being held consistent with City Council Ordinance 2020-04 regarding continuity of government, a copy of which can be found online at www.stanton.vaa.us/cogord2020-04. Given that we are conducting this meeting by Zoom with the meeting being livestreamed on the city's website and broadcast over the cable system as it occurs, I believe it merits reminder of a few special requests as we undertake this meeting in this unique format. First, I emphasize the request that each speaker speak loudly and slowly and self-identify each and every time when speaking so that it will be clear who is speaking before your remarks are made. Second, please pause after each speaker to allow a brief interval between that speaker and another speaker. Third, if for any reason a participant cannot clearly hear the speaker or must leave the meeting before it is adjourned, please let us know. Fourth, all votes will be taken by roll call and recorded in the minutes. Fifth, I ask that if any member of City Council has to leave the meeting for any period of time, to please interject and make an announcement so that the clerk may take note of attendance in the minutes. I ask that you also announce your return so it also may be reflected in the meeting minutes. Finally, I ask everyone's patience because without being in the same room, it is likely the speaker will not realize that another speaker is continuing. Again, we may unintentionally step on each other's words, so it's fine if we need to have the speaker repeat or clarify. We'll take whatever time is necessary so that everyone is clear about what is being said and by whom. I will now take questions from council members and participants if you have any questions about the process. Council members, do you have any questions about the process?
No.
If not, then we will continue on. Have we heard from Mr. Holmes?
Can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you. So the next item is the invocation, moment of silence by Ms. Oaks.
I do an invocation, and if you'd like to join me, please bow your heads. Dear God, On May 25th, 2020, a grievous injustice was done to your child, George Floyd. On that day, you stretched your arms wide, and the heavens opened as you brought forth and embraced your child within your loving arms. On that day, you showed your child, George Floyd, a pure and perfect love that will surround him for eternity. On that day, compassion went for your child. On this day, in memory of George Floyd, please help us, O God, the rest of your children, to love in the same amazing way and remind us that love will conquer all. In your most holy name, amen.
Thank you. Next, we'll have item one, the consideration of the work session and regular meeting agendas.
Mayor Doll.
Ms. Mead?
This is Councilwoman Mead. I move to approve the agenda for the work session and to add one item to the regular meeting, item I. It will be a discussion and approval of a joint statement by members of City Council.
All right, is there a second?
Second, Jim Harrington.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ms. Simmons, would you call the roll, please?
Dr. Harrington.
Hi.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Dr. Curran.
Aye.
Mayor Doll.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kyer.
Aye.
Ms. Oaks.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item two is the discussion of the organizational meeting of City Council. Mr. Rosenberg?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. It's been our practice to include this item on your work session agenda for a meeting preceding the organization July 1st every two years. And the real purpose is to put forward to members of council the rules of procedure and the schedule that will be ready for the new council's consideration of the organizational meeting on July 1st. You have those materials in the agenda package, and the schedule, as it has been in the past, provides for meetings on the second and fourth Thursday of every month with the exception of the months of November and December. In those months, council meets only on one occasion, the second Thursday of each of those two months. And the procedural memoranda are also in the agenda materials, and I extend continuing members of council an invitation to review those items and to communicate to me any comments that you may have, any revisions that you may believe to be appropriate so that we have an opportunity to collect those and perhaps have some language ready for the new council to consider at its meeting on July 1st. We are continuing to work on the arrangement of the organizational meeting. I'm going to ask, if I can interrupt my remarks, if there's some feedback that I think that is occurring. So I would ask that you mute your microphones if you're not speaking. And I'm... So we are making plans, finalizing plans for the organizational meeting at noon on July 1st. At this time, I believe that it will be an in-person meeting. That meeting will likely occur at AR Ware Elementary School in the cafeteria, which is significantly larger than council chambers. And we will take appropriate steps to provide for social distancing. And I'll have further details for you. We are also making arrangements for any members of council who do not wish to participate in person to participate electronically. And as we progress with those plans, we will keep you updated. So at the present time, you know, I'm happy to receive any comments that you may have concerning the procedural memoranda. Although, as I've indicated, you're welcome to reach out to me over the course of the next several days. I would just ask that you do so somewhat in advance of the July 1st date to give us an opportunity to try to pull together the various pieces of input that we receive so that we have something that might be ready for the new council's consideration on July 1st. Thank you.
Council members, do you have any questions at this time? I have one. I'm just curious, have you received any questions or comments or desired changes with the council memoranda so far?
I have received a couple of comments at this point, Madam Mayor. One subject addressed involves the city payment of dues for civic organizations. And if you'll give me one moment, I will... I'm trying to recall the other subject. It involves the procedure for approval of grants. The current procedure requires council approval of only those grants which require a local match. And there's been a request suggested or a request made to expand that so that council approval would be required not only for grants requiring a local match but for all grants. Those are the two specific subjects for which I've received comments thus far.
All right, thanks. I have one question about the grants. Like, how many grants do we receive throughout the city? Just a ballpark guesstimate.
I'm looking on my screen at Mr. Trayer, who is shaking his head back and forth and not up and down. So I think maybe that's probably a question that we'll have to answer. I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Trayer.
I can get that answer for you. I don't have it there. When you factor in schools, there's a tremendous amount. But I will have that for you. I will get that for you by the next meeting.
And of course, the school, you know, the school grants are not something that would require City Council approval in any case. So we wouldn't count those as a part of whatever figure we provide to you.
All right, council members, does anyone else have any questions at this point or comments?
Mayor Doll.
Ms. Mead?
Yes, I do have a question about the organizational meeting. What's your expectation of attendance at that meeting?
Ms. Mead, it's typically not a heavily attended meeting. And so, you know, if I were to base it on prior experience, I would say that we don't attend much, or we don't expect much in the way of attendance. Yet, there's a recognition, I think, on our part that this year could be different. And that is one reason that we've opted to plan for the meeting at the elementary school rather than in council chambers. Or we were also considering the circuit courtroom in the Cochrane Judicial Center. The elementary school cafeteria provides considerably more space and flexibility in terms of establishing a layout that allows people to keep themselves apart from one another.
And, Mr. Rosenberg, I assume we're still operating under the governor's restriction of public gatherings to 50 or less? Is that correct, or will that change by the time the organizational meeting takes place?
Well, Ms. Mead, I don't know whether it will change. Of course, we're in Phase Two right now where that restriction applies. The Phase Two is estimated to last two to four weeks. We're a week into it. That means perhaps we have three more weeks, which could take us just beyond July 1st. I haven't had this conversation with Mr. Gwynne, but I would just note that the governor's executive order expressly excludes from its application the operations of government. And so I'm not sure that technically that we're subject to that standard, although, you know, it certainly provides a good guide. But again, we're utilizing the space that we have tentatively selected because it will allow us to do a better job of helping people to maintain a social distance.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we'll move on to the next item, which is discussion of an ordinance to amend the FY 2020 budget ordinance for the city of Stanton by adding budget amendment number three. Mr. Rosenberg?
Madam Mayor, Mr. Trayer, Phil Trayer, the city's chief finance officer, will present this matter.
Very much. Madam Mayor, members of councils, a pleasure to be here this evening. Tonight, we are here to introduce budget amendment number three for FY 2020. The city portion of this budget amendment equals $2,320,846. The school portion of this budget amendment equals $42,736. Details have been summarized in your packet, includes the following general fund appropriations. $1.4 million transfer from the CIP fund to the general fund to cover projected revenue shortfalls associated with the COVID-19 virus shutdown. This is consistent with a plan that was presented to council on April 9th, 2020. We also have $2.1 million in CARESAC funding received by the city on June 1st, 2020. These funds are currently being coded to a COVID contingency account and will be used to reimburse the city for allowable costs. Okay, here we go. Unspent...
My apologies.
That's okay. I wasn't going to say anything.
Okay.
Unspent funds at the end of FY 2020 will roll into the city's fund balance and will require additional appropriation from council on FY 21 in order to be spent. Finally, we have $145,000 in additional requests for task force funding, insurance recoveries, and multiple grant awards. The breakdown is provided here at the bottom of Slide three. Most notably, we have $52,000. I think this is for heart monitors. Chief Garber has worked pretty hard to get this, and we have $20,000 for 911 upgrades. Chief Williams has worked with the U.S. Marshal Service for some task force funding. Sheriff Robertson has secured some court security grant money, and the horticultural area has received $13,000 as well. On Slide four, we see that we have a $1.4 million adjustment to the CIP fund with transfers money back to the general fund to cover revenue shortfalls associated with the virus. And we have $42,000 in adjustments for the education fund to recognize equity fund contributions as well as some grant true-ups for the schools in FY 2020. The city manager has reviewed this budget amendment and recommends the introduction of the amendment as presented.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions about this?
Mr. Trayer? This is Councilwoman Mead.
Yes, ma'am.
Those grants that were listed as part of this ordinance, would those be examples of grants that would require specific approval by City Council?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? We'll be introducing this and having a public hearing, but we will not, we will have it at the next meeting to approve, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yep. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So item four and D on the regular meeting agenda is discussion of amendments to the Fire Prevention Code. Mr. Rosenberg?
Madam Mayor and members of council, Perry Weller, Deputy Fire Marshal, will present this item.
Madam Mayor, members of council, just as you see in your briefing packet there, the Code of Virginia specifically provides the authority for the city to adopt the statewide Fire Prevention Code. This code identifies certain procedures the cities shall follow and provide services. We recommend proposed changes that sets comparable fees without allowable calities in a state fire marshal's office fee schedule. I've been charged with enforcing the fire code and levying fees for years. Demand for services on my office, seeing that I'm basically at one person office, has increased since 2015. I've provided numbers to the Assistant City Manager that kind of shows how the increase in services has been over the last few years. So those can be made available if you need them. But since it's been, the last increase has been since 2015, we're recommending some certain fees be increased due to the amount of works being put forth on my office. Most of the fee increases are proposed to account for the increased amount of time required to review permanent applications, conduct site inspections, and to attend events such as fairs, special events, fireworks displays, and underground storage tank removals in standby capacity. The proposed increases are, if the increases are approved, the city's fees will remain below the statewide average. So I think you were sent in your packets, proposed resolution and the fees that are requested to be increased. The carnivals and fairs is recommended to increase from $50 to $100 per event. The explosive sections of the operational permits to store explosives, fireworks, or power technical materials are subject to change from $125 to $200, and that's an annual fee. To use explosives per site is currently $75. The proposed change is $150, and that permit is good for a time period of 90 days. To conduct a fireworks display is recommended to increase from $100 to $200, and that's per event. The sale of fireworks is per site, and that's typically only allowed between June 1st and July 15th per calendar year. It is currently $75, and the request is to increase that to $100. And as stated, due to the time, the limited time, it's only a 45-day permit. Another request to increase is the flammable and combustible liquids operational permit to remove, abandon, and place temporarily out of service for more than 90 days. Any kind of above-ground or underground flammable or combustible liquid storage tank is currently $50, and we're requesting to increase it to $100. And that's a 90-day permit. A new fee that is requested to be added is to operate tank vehicles, equipment, tanks, plants, terminals, wells, fuel dispensing station, refineries, distilleries, and other similar facilities where flammable and combustible liquids are produced, processed, transported, stored, dispensed, or used. That's requested to be an annual permit of $50. And I know there probably needs to be some questions on that, and I'm more than happy to explain that one. Another new fee will be to store or handle Class II or Class III liquids in excess of 25 gallons in a building or in excess of 60 gallons outside a building, except for fuel used in connection with the oil-burning equipment such as heaters. And that's going to be a, requested to be a $50 annual fee as well. And then there was one other request. It was to add to the fees, it's not adding a fee, it's just adding some language into the inspections for licensure by Department of Social Services. We want to add behavioral health services. There's been some unfunded mandates that's come down from the state that we are required to inspect daycares, nursing homes, other adult and childcare facilities, both for licensure by the Department of Social Services and for licensure by the Department of Behavioral Health. So we're having, we're required to go out and conduct inspection of those. And we just want to make sure that we're capturing the full essence of being able to make sure these people are aware that they need to have our inspections for licensure, and that we're just adding that into our current fee schedule.
All right, thank you. Council members, do you have any questions at this time?
Madam Mayor, you have a break on the agenda here. We're obviously, I think, running ahead. And given some of the other items on the agenda, I would suggest if council members are amenable that you press forward, and perhaps you'll wind up with some extra time at the end, perhaps not.
That's fine. Council members, is that okay with everyone?
Yes.
Well, thank you for the information on this. It sounds like no one has any questions. So this will be item D on the regular meeting agenda. So item five and F is discussion of ordinance concerning powers and duties of Chief Finance Officer and purchases and adoption of federal grants policy. Mr. Rosenberg?
Madam Mayor, Mr. Trayer will present this item.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of the council, it's an honor to serve you again this evening. Tonight, we are here to review recommended updates to our procurement policy, which incorporates required federal language as conditions for acceptance of federal grant awards. This is more of a formality, as everything incorporated into this policy is already a part of our daily operations. Specifically, we will be asking council to approve minor updates to three city codes, which will specifically direct staff to follow federal statutes as they apply, as well as our state and local statutes. The following code updates are requested. Code 2.45.020, general powers and duties of the Chief Financial Officer adds federal statutes to the list of state statutes, city ordinance, and city manager directives to be followed by the city's Chief Financial Officer. Code 2.45.120, purchasing agents and purchases generally. Amendment includes increasing the minimum amount for which records of successful quoted bids or quotations must be maintained from $1,000 to $10,000. This change is requested to remain consistent with state and federal policies. Code 2.45.130, purchases to be compliant with state law adds federal to the list of state statutes, city ordinance, and city manager directives to be followed by the city. On Slide two, in addition, we will be asking... On slide two, in addition, we will be asking council to formally incorporate the federal grant policy into policy 2.45.130. This policy has been reviewed and recommended by our auditors to ensure federal grant compliance. This is a 15-page document, so I'll briefly run through the major items. The policy outlines how grant monies are to be spent via adherence to the Code of Federal Regulations, CFR, which requires purchases to be necessary and reasonable for transactions to be conducted at arm's length and in a prudent manner that does not unjustifiably increase federal award costs. It also outlines allowable costs, which includes costs that are necessary and reasonable, costs which conform to the CFR, requires costs to be consistent between federal and non-federal monies. This allows the use of federal grant funds for federal matching of other federal grant awards and requires the city to follow GAAP. The policy establishes a reimbursement method as a primary funding source. Advances when allowed are to be expended as soon as possible, and interest earned in excess of $500 in such advances must be returned to the federal pass-through agency by the end of the quarter. The procurement directions portion of the policy reaffirms the city's compliance with the Virginia Public Procurement Act. The general procurement standards portion of the policy requires the city to document and follow procurement guidelines in conjunction with federal and state and local requirements. The competition portion of the policy requires all procurement transactions to be conducted in a manner which provides full and open competition. Procurement methods outlined in the policy are consistent with our current policy. The affirmative action section requires the city to take all necessary affirmative steps to assure minority businesses, women business enterprises, and labor surplus area firms are used when possible. Page 13, we agree to have the federal awarding agency or pass-through entity to review and to have access to all technical specifications on proposed procurements in advance to ensure the service being specified is the one being proposed for acquisition. On page 14, bonding requirements are outlined. At minimum, a bid guarantee from each bidder equivalent to 5% of bid price is required. A performance bond on the part of each contractor for 100% of the contract price is required. A payment bond on the part of the contractor for 100% of the contract price is required. And finally, on page 15, a conflict of interest policy must be in place for all federal grant awards. And that's what I have at this time.
All right, thanks. Are there any questions from council members? I know it's exciting stuff. Anyway, this will be item F on the regular meeting agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item six is an update on the process for renewal review of the A1 agricultural forestal districts. Mr. Rosenberg?
Madam Mayor, Rodney Rhodes, the city's senior planner, will present this item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and city council members. The city recognized and created the A1 agricultural and forestal district zoning overlay classification back in 1997, and this was as a result of the annexation of 1987 of agricultural property from the county. And as a way of dealing with that special property, the city has reviewed and approved a number of applications for such districts and extensions since its inception. The most recent renewal was back in 2015. Currently, there are four such districts with approximately 2,500 acres. The current districts are set to expire on December 31st, 2020. The city's planner, Tim Hartless, has provided some maps of these four districts in your packet. They are Bell's Lane, Merrifield, M.O. Carr, and Middlebrook. Planning Commission over past few months has taken a preliminary review of these districts. The commission looked at the underlying zoning as well as what the comprehensive plans states for these areas. The General Land Use and Development Guide, Future Land Use Map in the Conference Plan 2018 to 2040 designates the majority of these areas planned farm development. And the planned farm development is intended to support the growth of active farm, forestal, nursery, and related enterprises. These provisions are designed to achieve the following objectives: encourage farm and farm-related enterprise, allow for the integration of development and farming activities, promote efficient use of land and infrastructure through design, encourage the preservation of steep slopes, floodways, and floodplains, and provide for recreational opportunities in open space. And also in the conference plan, there's a list of policies in this district, and those are also included in the staff briefing before you. I would also note that when the comprehensive plan was updated, and the committee that was working on this, and I'm sure Mr. Harrington would remember, that we took a special interest in looking at these ag forest lands. And at that time, in the previous comp plan, they were designated as future growth areas. And the committee working on this said, well, that's not what we're, these areas are intended for, and we need to remove that from there and come up with a new designation. So they were designated as agricultural and forestal district designation at that time. And obviously, the comp plan went through the public review process and hearings before the planning commission and city council before it was adopted. And I would note that these new, it is the intent of this priority area to protect designated agricultural and forestal districts. The city, the state code allows the city to just determine that a full review is not necessary and just to renew the current four districts in their current arrangements. And the code also stipulates that the renewal period shall be no less than four years and no greater than 10 years. And the planning commission at their May 21st, 2020 meeting conducted a public hearing to get additional feedback on these districts, and approximately 300 notices were mailed to adjoining property owners of the four districts, and staff did not receive any concerns from the public on the potential renewal of these districts. I reached out to all the property owners, I tried to reach out to all the property owners in these districts, and I believe there were 18, and I was able to reach 15 of them, and all of them supported a renewal of districts for the maximum period of 10 years. And after conducting this public hearing, the planning commission, on a four-to-one vote, recommended approval of the renewal of these existing A1 districts for a period of 10 years. I would note that the vote was not unanimous. It was four-to-one. The one member that voted against the motion, voted against the motion because they had some concerns with the 10-year period. They were in favor of renewing the districts. And I'd be glad to answer any questions you have this time. City planner, Tim Hartless, is also participating. He has a lot more history regarding these areas than I do. And also, the city assessor, Charlie Haney, is participating if you have any questions about tax implications. And I'm sure Mr. Gwynne would also be willing to address any legal questions you have.
All right, thank you. Council members, do you have questions or comments?
This is Councilwoman Andrea Oakes, I have a question.
All right.
It said in the notes, the review process involves a substantial procedure that requires significant city resources. Why is that? What significant resources in order to do the review process?
I'll try to take a stab at this. It requires a committee to review these districts. This is a standing committee of the city, Ag Forest Renewal District. I believe we're a couple of members shy on that. It's 10 members, I think we need a couple more. There are some requirements for particular members to have, to be involved in agricultural or forestal, or have some specialized knowledge of that. And they would have various meetings with the city's, either commissioner of revenue or the city's assessor. And they would also, I believe, have a, conduct a public hearing, and then it would go to the planning commission, and they would go through a similar process and also have public hearings and make a recommendation. So the committee would make a recommendation, the planning commission make a recommendation, and then it would go to city council. Tim, you have anything else that you'd like to add about that process that I've left out?
It is a very lengthy process because the Ag Four Committee prepares a report, a detailed report, for each property in the district, and then planning commission will review it, hold a public hearing. Each public hearing requires advertising in the paper, which is about $2,000, plus the cost of sending out the letters. It is a very time-consuming process and requires a lot of staff time, as well as a lot of money for advertisements and mailings and so forth.
All right, thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Madam Mayor, Terry Holmes.
Holmes, yep.
10 years seems like a long time to extend this. Shouldn't we have maybe like a four- or five-year period where we could review it? I mean, does it cost us to review it every time the period comes up?
Yes, obviously, it takes, you know, staff time and resources to do the advertisement and notifications. It takes planning commission time, it takes city council time to go through this process. But more so, what we heard from the property owners in the agricultural districts is that, you know, this is their business. It's, all of you that are in business know it's difficult to plan for the future if you don't know if you have a future. I mean, to make large expenses, you know, payments, investments, equipment, that takes, you know, decades to pay back, I think, in some cases, you know, combines and that type of thing. That's why they would like to see this renewed for the maximum period of 10 years, so they can make those decisions, knowing that at least for the next 10 years, they'll have this, be in this ag forest district.
With, when it's considering the number of animals, is that per acre or is that per? I didn't quite understand that. You know, like you could have 10 hogs, 20 chickens, 10 turkeys. Is, how does, how does that, or is it more just for farming and less for raising animals?
Those numbers are not per acre, they're per farm within the district. And those, you know, hogs, chickens, those are typically animals that would produce more smell and be more disruptive in a city environment than cattle or horses or goats might.
Mayor Doe, this is Councilwoman Mead.
Ms. Mead?
I'd like to just point out that a lot of this acreage is zone residential. And while we have a shortage of housing in the $150,000 to $250,000 range, at least according to a recent article in News Leader, that we have nowhere near this much need for residential housing in the city of Stanton. And the development of housing in these, on this land would be a considerable cost to the city in terms of educating children, maintaining sewer and water. And if there's no demand for that, and we can focus our development efforts on land inside the city that is not currently in the ag forestal districts, I think that makes a great deal more sense. And to echo what was said about the fact that these are businesses, they do in fact need significant amounts of time to amortize the cost of fencing, the cost of wells, and the maintenance of the property in general. And also, I just want to point out that most of the livestock, I mean, these are cows. We don't have to educate the cows. And we're not maintaining water and sewer on this property. So I don't see it as being a significant, I mean, the assessor pointed out the amount of forgone tax revenue, but we're not paying for a lot of services out on these properties. So I don't think that we have enough demand for housing to justify pulling back on these, on the timeframe for these ag forestal districts. And I would support a review or a renewal of the ordinance without review for a period of 10 years.
Other council members' questions or comments? I have a question. When, during the planning commission's review and staffs, was there any discussion about the fact that one of these districts is in an opportunity zone? And I wondered if the owners, if they were aware of that and if they would be interested in allow, in having the opportunity to maybe have investors develop real estate on their land? I didn't know if there was any kind of discussion about that.
I'm going to defer to Tim Hartless on this, because I do not recall that coming up in conversations during the planning commission's discussions.
No, we never had any discussion about the opportunity zones. But in my discussions with the property owners, no one had expressed any interest in developing their land. They were all expressing interest in continuing to farm.
We're, but I guess the curious thing is, do they even know their properties in the opportunity zone? That might change their mind.
Right, and we didn't discuss that in our meetings, and I have not discussed it with any of the property owners, so I'm not sure if they're aware of that or not.
All right, any other questions or comments? If you look at your briefing, you see we've got a couple options in terms of what we want to do at this point. We can put the, put it on the, a future meeting for council's consideration of renewing the existing districts, or initiating a full review of the districts, or a full review of less than all the districts. So we could choose one or two to have them review, not all of them. Then the other one is, city council may but need not direct staff to schedule and advertise a public hearing, although none is required at this juncture on the matter, to receive additional input before making a determination on whether to renew or initiate any review of the districts. Such a public hearing could be held at our next meeting. So let me go down my list of council names and get your thoughts on how we should proceed at this point. And I'll start with Vice Mayor Kyer.
Mayor Doe, I would be okay with proceeding with the entire district.
Just renewing?
Renewing for the 10-year period.
Okay. Dr. Han?
I'm in favor of renewing for the 10-year period.
All right. Dr. Curran?
The same. I'd like to renew for the 10-year period.
All right. Mr. Holmes?
Yes, I'm for renewing.
And you're okay with the 10-year?
Yes. Don't even, only, I was wondering about the economic district or zone, was that Middlebrook area?
Yeah, yeah. Ms. Mead?
I would be in favor of renewing all four districts without review.
Ms. Oaks?
I would like a public hearing.
At the next meeting?
Yes. Yeah, that'll be fine, yes, next meeting.
Does anyone, any other council members, what are your feelings on having a public hearing? I'll go down again.
Madam Mayor, this is Mr. Rosenberg. Before you do that, let me just ask Mr. Rhodes, I know that we have this in your agenda briefing as an option. Can we notice adequately a public hearing for, do we have enough time at this point to notice a public hearing for the June 25th meeting?
Yes, according to our city attorney who's here, since this is not a required public hearing on a land use matter, all we have to do is put it in the paper one week. And so we do have time to put it in the paper. And so we do have time to put it in the paper for next week and then conduct a public hearing on the 25th.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, this is, uh, Doug Nguyen. There is no legal requirement for a public hearing at this point. It's fine if council wants to conduct one. Uh, the only competing considerations would be the cost of running the ad, which is not cheap. But, uh, to the extent that allows one more opportunity for public input, that's certainly within council's prerogative.
All right, so I'll go through the list of names again and see, uh, who, who wants to just renew it for 10 years, uh, which I assume we would do at, uh, at, uh, the next meeting or have a public hearing and then make a decision. So Vice Mayor Kier?
Um, will my statement stand? I would be okay with leaving it as it is, renewing it.
All right, thanks. Dr. Harrington?
Uh, same here.
All right, Dr. Curran?
Uh, yes, same, I, I just would like to renew for 10 years.
All right, Mr. Holmes?
Uh, yeah, I don't want to spend any more money than we have to, um, I, I'm for re- renewing.
All right, Ms. Mead?
Um, I, I'm, I'm in favor of renewing without review and without a public hearing. And in fact, I'd be happy to make a motion to that effect.
Well, um, I think we're at the head nod stage, Mr. Rosenberg, is that correct?
Um, that, that, that's fine. Um, I'm a little unclear if Ms. Mead was making a motion to renew or making a motion to place it on the agenda for consideration of renewal.
No, I was, I was making, I, I was proposing I, to make a motion that we, uh, that we approve the renewal of the districts without review and without a public hearing and do so at this meeting.
Madam Mayor, um, we would need to prepare an ordinance or resolution to reflect that council would want to do a renewal and establish the new period for review. So we would need an opportunity to prepare that, so that would mean that we'd have to get it ready for the next meeting.
Yeah, it sounds like we need to have it at the next meeting, so, but it clearly, uh, uh, the overwhelming majority of council members, uh, just want to go ahead and have it on the next agenda uh, with the opportunity to vote for renewing at a 10-year, uh, uh, term. And so I, I think that's how we should proceed. I don't know that we need a motion for that, do we, Mr. Rosenberg?
No, we're, we can take direction from the consensus council.
All right, thanks. All right, item seven and G is discussion of substantial amendment to the FYI 2019 Annual Action Plan to allocate additional U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development CDBG CV funds awarded to the city of Stanton under the CARES Act. Mr. Rosenberg?
Madam Mayor, Billy Vaughn, the city's Director of Community Development, uh, will present this item.
Madam Mayor, uh, this is Billy Vaughn. And I'm back before you for the next step in the process of the city receiving, uh, COVID-19 funding. Uh, as you stated, uh, the CARES Act provides a funding through, uh, through its community development block grant program. We are currently an entitlement community, so we do qualify for the funding. This new funding, uh, must be used to address low, moderate income residents in the city of Stanton. Uh, as I stated, it allows us to amend our annual action plan for FYI 19, which was, uh, previously approved by council. Um, and so in doing so, we have to develop a strategy for spending those funds. So we conducted some outreach and we, um, contacted 14 various agencies and you have the list in the report. We received responses from eight agencies. Um, our HUD consultant vetted those proposals and clearly identified five agencies that, uh, were, uh, able to address, uh, the provisions of the COVID-19 funding. The needs that they'll be addressing will be rental, utility and mortgage assistance to prevent homelessness, shelter operations, food banks, health services and legal services. Uh, you have the list of those proposed strategies, uh, in the packet, but I'll just go over, go over them briefly, uh, for the public's benefit. One of the first strategies is homeless, homeless prevention. Uh, the plan proposes allocating $40,000 to the Salvation Army for homeless prevention. Uh, the funds will be used, uh, to address rental and utility assistance to low, moderate income households for up to three months. It is projected that 200 people will benefit from these funds. The next one, which is also with the Salvation Army, is to propose, propose allocating $9,482 for grocery distribution to LMI households. It will serve approximately, uh, 800 LMI people. Uh, the next one, the city proposes allocating $26,590 to the Community Foundation for Homeless Prevention. This will also provide short-term rental assistance and utility assistance to LMI households for no more than three months. It should benefit up to 20 people. Uh, Community Foundation will partner with the Blue Ridge Legal Services to provide legal aid services to LMI. Uh, this will address households facing eviction and that are at risk of homelessness. Uh, this part of the budget would be $25,000 and it would serve approximately 20 people. Also proposing to assist the Valley Mission with staff support of the emergency shelter. As, as a result, as required, uh, require social distancing, the mission had to increase shelter staff support. Funds will provide 10 weeks of gross salary for shelter staff. And this budget item is $30,000 and will benefit 46 people. And then the last one is the Central Shenandoah Health District budget of $35,000 to hire a, uh, worker to provide education and resources for the underserved areas of Stanton. Uh, the funds will also be used to purchase PPE items. And then the last item in this, uh, proposed, uh, budget would be for administration, for oversight. Uh, and that would be $41,000, which is the max of 20% under HUD guidelines. Uh, we, we've met many of the requirements from HUD by holding public hearings, which we had one on June the 9th. We have met the requirements for the proper posting and publishing of notices. And so with council's consideration of the item tonight, um, that would put us one step closer to receiving the $207,000. If anyone has any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Council members, do you have any questions or comments?
Nope.
Uh, Madam Mayor?
Mr. Holmes?
Yes, uh, are all these, uh, organizations based out of Stanton? That, uh, were given the money to, uh, uh, I didn't see Blue Ridge Food Bank on here. I was just wondering if it's because it wasn't in the city.
No, they received, uh, the request, uh, but stated that they're receiving other funds under another CARES Act funding pool and did not need additional funding from us.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, this will be, uh, item G on the regular meeting agenda. And, um, I will be abstaining from voting on that, uh, even though tech, I have no, um, actual personal interest in the transaction, but, uh, out of, uh, to avoid any appearance of conflict, uh, I will abstain on that, uh, because of Blue Ridge Legal Services.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
There are several certification forms that require the mayor's signature. And, uh, I will forward those to, uh, the city manager.
Yes.
Which those forms one time will have to be submitted.
Yeah, that's no problem, um, I can do that, I just won't vote on it. All right, uh, item, uh, eight is a review of public safety personnel training and procedures and protocols for respectful, fair and impartial treatment of all individuals. Mr. Rosenberg?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, at your request and at the request of Vice Mayor Kier, Police Chief Jim Williams and Fire and Rescue Chief Scott Garber join us this evening. They will review with you their respective department's personnel training and procedures and protocols for respectful, fair and impartial treatment of all individuals. The review is offered in recognition of the heightened public awareness and interest in light of recent events nationally. Let me also note further that at the request of the mayor and the vice mayor, an invitation to participate was also extended to Sheriff Matt Robertson. Due to a prior engagement, Sheriff Robertson respectfully declined the invitation and asked that the statement included in your agenda materials be shared with you and the public. At the conclusion of, uh, Chief Garber and Chief Williams' presentation, uh, I'm sure that they will entertain your questions and I would be pleased to convey any questions that you have to Sheriff Robertson. At this time, I'd like to invite Chief Garber to begin the presentation.
Good evening, uh, Madam Mayor, members of council. Uh, very quickly, um, I can guarantee you that our department is well-trained and diverse for, um, handling such situations. And I'll start off with what we have in, we have written in our policies and procedures as our daily philosophy and it hangs in on the wall on both fire stations. It simply states, "We will respect each other and the citizens we serve. Treat every citizen as if they are your mother, father, sister or brother. We will value culture and ethical diversity. Set the example and lead regardless of rank or position." And again, that hangs on the wall on both fire stations, so our people see it every day. Uh, our department has had and will continue to have training in topics of sexual harassment and cultural diversity. Uh, personnel safety and the safety of our citizens is the utmost importance to myself as well as everyone within this department. This expectation of, the expectation of this department is that I won't, will not tolerate anything less from our personnel other than be professional 100% of the time. Uh, regardless of one's race, religion or orientation, I expect each citizen to be treated fairly and courteously. I, as the fire chief, expect the utmost professionalism, sound decision-making and the highest level of integrity to be exercised by our fire and rescue personnel at all times. And with that, I'll take any questions that anybody may have.
Council members, do you have any questions or comments? Hearing none, I guess.
Mayor Doe?
Uh, Vice Mayor Kier?
Vice Mayor Kier, yes, um, Chief Garber, thank you so much for that statement, I appreciate it. Um, and, and I believe it's sincere. Um, I worked with you for quite a few years now and, and I hold you in the highest of esteem. Um, one of my questions would be, uh, our screening process, and I'm going to have this for both of you. Um, how we, uh, screen or bring people into, um, air forces and how we continue to monitor or um, test to make sure that, first of all, they're mentally and physically capable of it, of continuing. I know their jobs are probably the two most strenuous jobs in the city. And my concern is their mental, you know, and capabilities and, and their uh, ability to deal with stress or that there are sources to help them deal with that.
Uh, yes, sir, you're definitely correct with the, uh, the mental and stress level for our personnel. Um, we are, we have basically a very open door policy for anyone that has any type of issues and as well as what we may notice. Um, we have stepped, taken a few steps further than the normal, um, human resources offered, uh, employee assistance program that we have actually brought in extra counseling, um, that specifically deals with first responders and the, to the stress levels that they operate under. Um, so we have, we've been working on that for a couple of years now. And we're actually in the process, um, between fire and police, and I'm sure Jim Pete Williams can elaborate on this as well. Um, I don't think John Ben is on the call with us tonight, but he's been very instrumental. But we're in the process of, um, putting together a peer counseling team that uses our own personnel to be able to counsel people, whether it's, it's firefighters, counseling, police officers in the time of need or vice versa. Uh, we were pretty well involved in that and then all the COVID-19 stuff started. So that's kind of been slowed up a little bit. So we're not to the point that we should be, but it's mainly been because of other things going on.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council members? All right, hearing, hearing none, we'll, we'll move on to Chief Williams.
Madam Mayor, members of council, thank you for, for giving me a few minutes here tonight. First of all, let me, let me tell you that the Stanton Police Department does a, a very good job, but we're always open to improving in any and all aspects. As many of you have probably read, um, there's, uh, because it's been published widely in a lot of things. There's, there's more than 18,000 law enforcement agencies in this country. Um, they're all accountable to their own community, which is a good thing. Um, there's one-man departments and then NYPD has, you know, what would be described as the fifth largest army in the world, almost 40,000 officers. But we strive really hard, um, in Stanton at creating a culture, um, that our citizens and our visitors deserve. Um, and I think we do a lot of things right. We've been accredited since 1985. We're the longest, uh, standing accredited agency in the world. Um, and August will have our 11th award. And what accreditation does is it gives us best practices and it's a dynamic process. So as, as a profession changes, then the accreditation standards change. It also makes us look at what we're doing and audit our, our policies and our procedures and, and continually look and try and get better. In 2015, President Obama, uh, had a task force that concluded the 21st century policing. Among his, uh, recommendations, we followed a number of them. Fair and impartial policing came out of that. Uh, I was one of the first chiefs in Virginia, uh, to bring that into our department. Talks a lot about implicit bias training. Um, we try to have those tough conversations with our officers. We don't try, we do. Um, if you're an African-American male and, and you're young and it's 2:00 in the morning and your car stopped and the, uh, the officer says, "I want to search it." He should be asking himself, well, if this was an 80-year-old white woman, would I be asking to search the car? And if the answer is no, then he shouldn't be asking, uh, the, the, the young male. So we talk about that and the implicit bias stuff was stuff that was very good. And, and I worked through Department Criminal Justice Services to, to bring fair and impartial policing actually throughout Virginia. We sponsored one of the trainings here and brought people in all over the, uh, all over the state to get that training. And we continually train in that with our new officers and our current officers. Uh, we train in use of force, situational decision-making, bias awareness, de-escalation. You hear a lot about that now. Uh, we've also trained almost all of our people in crisis intervention training. And that's dealing with, uh, mental illness. And you know, since they defunded all that stuff, um, we're dealing with, uh, mental health crisis very, very often. And the training's 40 hours, um, of training, hands-on training. I've gone through, the vast majority of our people, other than the, the very new line officers, haven't gone through because you have to be here six months in order to go. Uh, in 2015, we started using BodyOne cameras. We use those for all citizen encounters. Um, they get reviewed regularly. Um, we do routine audits. Um, every use of force gets reviewed on at least three levels, including mine. Um, we average around 30 uses of, 35 uses of force per year for the past five years with more than 30,000 encounters and about 2,000 arrests. It's a small number, about a third of those are actually, uh, mental illness, uh, that we're dealing with. Um, and the other two-thirds are criminals that don't want to go to jail. Uh, we collect data on traffic stops, including demographics. We reported that to Kalia, the Commissioner on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. In July, uh, we will start reporting that to Virginia State Police because the Community Policing Act just came into effect. Um, we have in the past not done warnings. We have in the past not done warnings, because we didn't have a mechanism. We just spent some of our precious funds to, to print warning tickets, so that we can, we can get that, that data there. I will tell you that the, the killing of George Floyd on Memorial Day was not a policy issue, was not a training issue. There was a criminal, a criminal happened to be wearing a badge and a gun, and others stood by and watched, and it was completely, completely unacceptable. But it, it really wasn't policy, and it really wasn't training. It was, it was evil, is what it was. I've been asked, "How are we going to keep this from happening here?" In addition to what I've already talked about, we have what's called a Personnel Early Warning System. And so when an officer has use of force, he gets so many points. If he has an accident, that's his fault, he gets so many points. And when it gets to a certain level, and there's other things, but those are some of the major ones, then we call them in and evaluate what's going on. Is he having problems with his home life? Is, is there something going on? You know, maybe it's something, maybe it's not, but we utilize that. We try really hard to hire the right people as officers and create the culture that we want of a community servant. We're not an occupying army. We're not warriors. We don't talk about going to war or fighting. We do tell them that they need to go home to the end of their shift. We do vigorous background investigation. We do psychological screening of new hires, and we try really hard to reward the performance that we value. When there's issues, we take care of those issues through disciplinary. I can tell you, a few years ago, an officer was leaving a, leaving a scene, and he made a statement to a, one of the other officers there that, that he was about ready to throat punch that expletive, talking about the individual he was dealing with. It was heard by the individual. I subsequently terminated him as a police officer. He's not a police officer anymore. When you see these rogue police officers that you see in the, in the police departments throughout the country, typically, they've got a history of escalating behavior. I, I can't have that guy working for us. He doesn't embody what we do, so he didn't work here anymore. We continually try to improve the department and want to be part of the community. There are issues in law enforcement in this country. One of the biggest one is rogue officers going for, jumping from one police department to another. It's something that we need to address globally. We need to do a better job. Virginia, I think, decertified two or three police officers last year, which is not acceptable. Things for us to consider is we move forward during economic downturns. I've seen this before. They look for the, the Phil Trayers of the world, look for large pots of money. And one of the large pots of money is training. Another one is overtime. And when you start cutting that, then you have issues, because our officers are working 12-hour shifts. The only way you can train them is to bring them in off-duty and, and pay them overtime. So we have to be careful that, that we're not cutting our training budgets, we're not cutting our training, training and our overtime budgets, when it's really important that we, this, we do a week-long use-of-force training every year, and it's really important that we continue that. I'm sure you've seen collective bargaining, is able to come to Virginia's localities, say it's okay, beginning in May of 2021. And we need to really think about that as a community, you know? Because in those agencies, you know, like Minneapolis and stuff, it's, it's, the union does a lot of things to block training. They do things for discipline with police officers. An example, that police officer I told you about that I terminated because he didn't belong working here, very well would be working here if we had a police union, because they would come to bat for him. And in closing, I just want to tell you a couple of things that have happened just in the last week, last two weeks. We had an individual that, that showed you some of the commitment of, of our, of our personnel. We had a, we had a guy, a young man, 20-years-old, driving here from about 100 miles away. He stole a rifle from his parents, from his father. He bought ammunition, and he was going to kill himself just down the street here. The last thing he did was call 911, so we would know to find his body. Dispatcher Jenna Wolf with the Police Department spent 25 minutes on the telephone with him, talked him out of his gun, kept the police officers away so it wouldn't be a suicide by cop. And tearfully, he walked away from the weapon and got the help that he needed, because that one dispatcher did a phenomenal job. Couple days, a little over a week ago, Officer Kara Butler went into a shower where a, a young woman had, had cut her arm severely, applied a tourniquet, and saved her life. She's going to be receiving the department's Life Saving Award. Hard not to, to, to watch, it's hard to watch and not be proud of, of her calm demeanor and the way she dealt with this, this, this young lady who then got the mental help that she needed after having her, her medical issues taken care of. And I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about our Investigations Unit, Lieutenant Jeremy Campbell, my investigators, Ryan Shaw, Brian Cook, and Butt Shift that worked about five months on this serial burglar downtown. Every day I came in, and I'm like, "We got to arrest this guy. You know, we got to arrest this guy." When they finally got, got some traction and got a good name, they worked from 8:00 in the morning, one morning, until noon the next. They worked about 28 straight hours to make sure that this individual was put in, was taken into custody, and all the paperwork was done, and some of the property was returned. So our folks do a phenomenal job. I'm proud of each and every one of them. We're not perfect, and that starts with me. And I want to get better. I know this is a tough time for, for law enforcement in our country, but I am proud of the work that our, our people do. And I know you are as well. And I thank City Council for the support that you've, that you've always given to me and for, for our Police Department and our Fire Department. And welcome any of you to come in if you want to spend some time with me reviewing our policies, our training, any body-worn camera footage. It's really interesting when you, when you sit and see what our officers deal with on a day-to-day basis. I'd be happy to, for any of you to spend a little bit of time with me. And with that, I'll, I'll shut up, because I'm kind of long-winded. And what questions can I answer?
Council members, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, Chief Williams, Ophie Keier again. You did, you did miss, miss mentioning one person. Well, let me back up and start with, I, I really, as I said before, greatly appreciate you and the job you have to do. And I appreciate your force, but that comes from the leader that that force has. And I don't know how many people know it, but you actually, until the virus hit, actually, you would meet weekly, I believe it was, with several African-American men, just to talk about the community. And that's highly commendable. My concerns, of course, are that I would feel that, and I would like to see nationwide, that when a police officer does commit a crime, any crime, and hopefully not ever as, as severe as this last one in Minnesota, that that officer be decertified, so that he can't serve anywhere else again. I think that's a must. I shared with Lee yesterday, when we were talking, I still get a lot of comments from our African-American community that every time they are near the presence of or passing by a police officer, they have a fear. We have heard over the past couple of years that officers have, we have actually seen where officers have killed people, and they use the, use the phrase, "I feared for my life." I shared with a business owner a couple of weeks ago that I don't think everybody understands that black men and, and women fear for their life every time they go by an officer. That's a very uncomfortable feeling to carry. I also shared that every male in my family, and I mean my extended family, has been pulled over and surrounded by officers, and the dogs pulled out, including me. I'm glad that you actually are doing programs that talk to, talk to bias, and hopefully this kind of treatment will not continue in our communities. So again, this is something I had to do. I really appreciate you. I appreciate Chief Garber. I am sorry that Sheriff Robertson could not make this, because I would like to hear the same comments from him personally. But thank you for, for doing this this afternoon.
Well, thank you, Vice Mayor Keier. And clearly, we have work to, and we, we need to do what we can to allay those fears, you know? So there's definitely work to be done.
Other comments or questions from council members?
Mayor Doe, this is Councilwoman Andrea Oaks. I would just like to make a comment to Fire Chief Garber and to Police Chief Jim Williams. Thank you for your service to the city of Stanton.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Holmes?
Yeah, I just, Chief Williams, how does being down a few officers, how does that affect being able to, to continue training as far as, you know, the, the stuff that we've been talking about?
It's a, we haven't reached critical mass now. We've been a lot lower than what we are now. We're, we're doing okay. We're doing okay. I mean, it's, it's optimal to have everybody hired. And I will tell you, I'm in my 36th year, and in that 36 years, we have been full strength, completely trained, and no one on like-duty and hurt for about two months. So you get to a point where you just always work short. It's just how short are you? And we're not, we're not that bad now. We've got three that are grad students in the academy on July 9th. We had a couple on injury leave that are, that are coming back. But it's, you know, you can't have an agency of 70, 75, 80 people and not, you know? We just had another one, a young man diagnosed with colon, colon cancer. He's going to be out for a while, so it just, it just is what it is.
I think both you and Chief Garber do a great job, and, and you know, we probably don't tell you as much as we should, but, but we really do appreciate it. I think all of us do.
Thank you.
Other council members, comments, questions? Mr. Rosenberg?
Madam Mayor, you have Sheriff Robertson's statement in the materials that were included in the agenda package. The sheriff did ask that the statement be shared orally with council, and perhaps you would like to read it, or if you would like, I'd be pleased to read it.
I, I'm happy to read it. I'd like to say thanks to Chief Williams and Chief Garber for coming and, and sharing their, their training and, and all the information. And I, I feel like that even though we're not perfect, nobody is, but I think that the public doesn't complain about you. So that's a, that's a start, you know? There's, I'm sure there's further to go, but, and I, I think some of the advances that you instituted in training and everything are, are helpful. And I, I anticipate that there may be more changes coming nationally. Don't know what they are. I know they're talking about community policing and calling it public safety or, you know, community. But we'll have to work together and see, and see what that turns out to be. But thank you both for, for being here and, and speaking with us tonight. So I'll, I'll read the sheriff's office, Matthew Robertson's statement. Dear City Council Members and Stanton Citizens, I want to thank you for reaching out to me regarding the topic of safety training, procedures and protocols for the respectful, fair, and impartial treatment of all individuals. You, along with a number of citizens, have reached out to me with their concerns surrounding the recent events that took place in Minneapolis on May 25, 2020, and what steps I was going to take to prevent this from happening in the city of Stanton. I know this incident understandably raises concern and doubt for many citizens. We should expect the utmost professionalism, sound decision-making, and the highest level of integrity be exercised by our law enforcement at all times. Our department has had and will continue to have training on these topics. We utilize online classes as well as in-person training at the academy on bias-based sexual harassment and cultural diversity training. We also train on the use of force continuum regularly as a department, and I require everyone in my department to strictly adhere to it. Since I was elected sheriff, our department has increased training in many different areas. Officer safety and the safety of our citizens is of the utmost importance to me. Please know, this is the expectation of my department, and I will not tolerate anything less from my deputies. Regardless of one's race, religion, or orientation, I expect each citizen to be treated fairly and courteously. I and the members of the Stanton Sheriff's Office are committed to providing the best services to all the citizens of our city. Please know, I am always available to speak with any citizen regarding their concerns or suggestions on this or any other, or any matter. My door is always open. Thank you again, and I hope you have a great evening. Sincerely, Sheriff Matt Robertson. So that was the statement we received. So are there any final comments on this, on this particular agenda item? If not, we, we will now go on break, and we'll be back for the regular meeting. Good evening, everyone. As mayor, I call this Electronic Communications Meeting of Stanton City Council to order. I note that this meeting is being convened with city council members using the Zoom platform, broadcast over the city's cable channel, and streamed live on the city's website, so that members of the public may hear our meeting. The meeting is also being recorded. I ask the clerk of council to call the roll for confirmation of those council members present for today's meeting at this time. Ms. Simmons?
Mayor Doe.
Here.
Vice Mayor Keier.
Here.
Mr. Holmes.
Here.
Ms. Oaks.
Here.
Dr. Harrington.
Here.
Ms. Mead.
Here.
Dr. Curran.
Here.
I've confirmed that all council members are present.
Thank you. I ask that City Manager Steve Rosenberg now identify his location, and those city officials or colleagues, if any, present with him at that location, and the participation of anyone else during today's meeting by Zoom or telephone. Mr. Rosenberg?
Madam Mayor, I am participating from my residence in Stanton. There is no one here with me at this location. Other city employees and officials participating on the Zoom platform include Faith Simmons, Clerk of Council, Leslie Beauregard, Assistant City Manager, Doug Gwynne, City Attorney, Phil Trayer, Chief Finance Officer, Billy Vaughn, Community Development and Economic Development Director, Cheryl Wagner, Tourism Director, Rodney Rhodes, Senior Planner, Charlie Haney, City Assessor, Perry Weller, Deputy Fire Chief, and Rick Johnson, City Treasurer. And I would also note that I anticipate that we may also be joined by Greg Beam, the Executive Director of the Stanton Downtown Development Association. I believe that Chief, Fire Chief Scott Garber is also present with Deputy Fire Chief Weller. And finally, three council members-elect, Steve Clathy, Amy Darby, and Mark Robertson, are participating as attendees on the Zoom platform, receiving the video and audio feed, but not otherwise participating in the meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Please let me mention that notice, reasonable under the circumstances of the electronic communications nature of this meeting, has been given to the public contemporaneously with the notice provided to members of city council. This meeting has also been publicized over the course of the past week on the city's website and Facebook page. Access to this meeting has been provided to the public by audio feed on the city's cable channel and the city's website. During the three public hearings toward the beginning of the meeting and matters from the public on council's agenda, toward the end of the meeting, public comments will be taken. Members of the public who wish to participate in such matters at the appropriate time may And when prompted, enter the access code 619-358 with the pound sign. Callers will be recognized in order. The public is reminded that public hearings and matters from the public are times for council simply to listen to your comments. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. Detailed instructions for public participation have been publicized over the course of the past week on the city's website and Facebook page, and can be found now on the agenda for this meeting and on council's website at www. council's website at www.cia.stanton.vad.us/government/city-council. Also, let me highlight and have reflected in the meeting minutes that this meeting is being conducted by Zoom, given the catastrophic nature of the declared emergency and disaster related to the COVID-19 outbreak, which as part of the total circumstances makes it impracticable or unsafe to assemble a quorum in a single location. The meeting is being held consistent with City Council Ordinance 2020-04 regarding continuity of government, a copy of which can be found online at www.stanton.vad.us/cogord2020-04. Given that we are conducting this meeting by Zoom, with the meeting being livestreamed on the city's website and broadcast over the cable system as it occurs, I believe it merits reminder of a few special requests as we undertake this meeting in this unique format. First, I emphasize the request that each speaker speak loudly and slowly, and self-identify each and every time when speaking, so that it will be clear who is speaking before your remarks are made. Second, please pause after each speaker to allow a brief interval between that speaker and another speaker. Third, if for any reason a participant cannot clearly hear the speaker or must leave the meeting before it is adjourned, please let us know. Fourth, all votes will be taken by roll call and recorded in the minutes. Fifth, I ask that if any member of city council has to leave the meeting for any period of time, to please interject and make an announcement so that the clerk may take note of attendance in the minutes. I ask that you also announce your return, so it also may be reflected in the meeting minutes. Finally, I ask everyone's patience, because without being in the same room, it is likely that a speaker may not realize that another speaker is continuing. Again, we may unintentionally step on each other's words, so it's fine if we need to have the speaker repeat or clarify. We'll take whatever time is necessary so that everyone is clear about what is being said and by whom. I will now take questions from council members and participants if you have any questions about the process. Council members, do you have any questions about this process? And hearing none, we'll move along. Our next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. I believe that we will have a, a, an American flag symbol on the, on the screen for us. Whoever is willing and able to please stand and repeat the Pledge of Allegiance in unison. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks to everyone. For the mayor's report, I, I am, I'm happy that we are doing, as well as we're doing with the COVID-19 crisis, although I'm seeing the rest of the country starting to spike. So, are they not living right? I don't know. But, but we all still need to be cautious about this and model best practices based on the, the best science available. And then finally, I'll say that I'm one year older now. I, I probably look that. But, anyway, that's all I have. So, are there additional items by members of council?
Mayor Dahl?
Dr. Harrington?
I have a report from the nominations committee. The nominations committee has been able to do some work over the last few weeks trying to fill some spaces in our boards and commissions. And I have some nominations in that regard. First of all, for the bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee to appoint Aaron Travato to a two-year term beginning July 1, 2020, and expiring June 30, 2022. To CAPSA to appoint Judy Bertner to a two-year term beginning June 1, 2020, and expiring May 31, 2022. To the Valley Community Services Board to appoint Nish Narduzi to a three-year term beginning July 1, 2020, and expiring June 30, 2023. And finally, to the Economic Development Authority to appoint Ophi Keir to fill the unexpired term of Sherry Moran, beginning July 1, 2020, and expiring January 31, 2022.
Thank you. And that, that's...
In the form of a motion.
Right. So, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mayor Dahl.
Vice Mayor Keir?
I will be abstaining from this vote as, as I'm considered in the, in the motion.
All right. Thank you. Anything else? If not, Ms. Simmons, would you call the roll, please?
Dr. Curran?
Aye.
Mayor Dahl?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Dr. Harrington?
Aye.
Ms. Oaks?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we have the minutes for the work session and regular meeting of May 28, 2020. You've had an opportunity to review them, so I would entertain a motion to approve at this time.
Mayor Dahl, this is Andrea Oaks. I'd like to make a motion to the work session and regular meeting minutes of May 28, 2020.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thanks. Any further discussion? Ms. Simmons, would you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Keir?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Dr. Harrington?
Aye.
Ms. Oaks?
Aye.
Ms. Oaks? Mayor Dahl?
Aye.
Dr. Curran?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We'll now begin with the, the item A, which is one of the public hearings. We'll go through items A, B, C, and D, with motions on C and D, and then we'll open for public, all the public hearings. And so, those who are on the phone can speak on any one of those four items that they wish. So, we'll start with item A, public hearing in consideration of a request by William Wade Gibbs for a special use permit to utilize a portion of 40 Woodley Road for horticultural use. Mr. Rosenberg?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before I turn this over to Rodney Rhodes, the city senior planner, to present this item, allow me to repeat the phone number for people to call. And while these presentations are underway on the next four items, people who are interested in commenting can call to be added to the queue for public comments. The number again is 844-854-2222. And when prompted, enter the access code 619-358-pound. One more time, 844-854-2222. Access code 619-358-pound. Mr. Rhodes?
Thank you. And thank you, Madam Mayor, city council members. Mr. William Gibbs, owner of 40 Woodley Road, is requesting a special use permit to use a portion of his property in the production of hemp. The property is owned R3 medium-density residential. It's fairly unique for the city of Stanton because it's almost 14 acres in size. And I would note that this application has been in the process for about six months, and it has significantly changed in scale and scope since the initial application. Plan Commission conducted a public hearing on this back in January, and six individuals that lived in that area expressed concerns about the use of fertilizers, herbicides, pesticides, erosion of stormwater, runoff, odor, and potential vandalism. So, after conducting the public hearing, the Plan Commission tabled action on their request and order for the, the applicant, the owner, Mr. Gibbs, to research some of those issues that were brought up and try to address those. And Mr. Gibbs followed up with an email in March explaining how he would plan to address some of those matters, and those are included in your briefing before you. One thing I would note that originally, he was asking for five acres, and he wasn't sure if it was hemp or be grapes that he would grow. I think he is committed now to growing hemp. He came back to say that he only wanted to do two acres in cultivation, but he wanted the flexibility to move that two acres within the five-acre area of his property. So, that was one of the major changes over the course of time. And then later on, when the Plan Commission conducted a meeting on this in May, he stated that he no longer wanted to do two acres. He would be satisfied with 100 plants. I'm not sure how big of an area 100 plants would take up, but I assume it's considerably less than two acres. And at that meeting, the Plan Commission considered the request, considered his comments addressing concerns from the neighbors, and recommended approval of this with a couple additional conditions. The vote was five to zero to recommend approval with the following conditions. Number one, no accessory structures or buildings shall be used or associated with the special use. Number two, no more than five acres of land shall be approved for horticultural use as part of the special use permit, and no more than two acres of land shall be under cultivation at any time. No pesticides or herbicides shall be used, is number three. Number four, all vehicular traffic in and out of the site must use the existing driveway, and no traffic shall use access, shall access the property from Alden Street. Number five, a minimum 50-foot vegetative buffer shall be provided between any crop and all property lines. Number six, failure to comply with the conditions of the special use permit will result in immediate revocation. Number seven and number eight were new and added at that meeting. Number seven, the number of crops planted with this permit shall be limited to 100. And number eight, the special use permits will expire on December 31, 2013. So, that would give him three growing seasons to, to see if this actually works at this site. I would note that we have another condition that staff is recommending, and I believe the city manager sent you an email with that proposed condition. And that condition is as follows. The applicant shall use, shall not use, and shall not permit the use of explosives in the preparation for, or in the management and operation of any agricultural or horticultural use on the property. And I also forwarded that to Mr. Gibbs this afternoon. I would note that Mr. Gibbs was receptive to the first eight conditions. And I believe he will call in tonight and, and talk about his application and also his views on the new proposed staff condition. Also, this afternoon, you, staff received an email from one of the adjoining property owners expressing some concerns with this. The city manager has forwarded that to all the council members. I have also forwarded that to Mr. Gibbs, and also followed up with a phone call to that individual that sent the email, had a lengthy conversation with him. He wasn't sure if he'd be able to participate in tonight's public hearing, but he was reasonably satisfied with my explanation to him. And I'd be glad to take any questions that city council has at this time or after you conduct the public hearing. Mayor Dahl?
Mayor Dahl, you're muted.
Dr. Harrington?
Rodney, thank you. I think I heard you mention that this expired in 2013. I think you probably meant 2023, unless I heard it wrong.
I probably misspoke. The condition, you're correct, December 31, 2023.
Okay. And so, my question is, so the permission to do this simply expires in 2023 unless some specific action is taken similar to what we're doing tonight to renew it for another period of time?
That's correct.
Okay. And if that, if the request is made that we renew it and extend it, then similar process will take place of gathering information, comment from neighbors, so forth, right?
That is correct. It would go through the same public review process with the public hearing before the Plan Commission, and then one before city council.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, if there are none, we'll move on to item B at this time, which is a public hearing in consideration of an emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to temporarily close public streets, on-street parking, sidewalks, other public ways, and public spaces to public use. Mr. Rosenberg?
Madam Mayor and members of council, this is a follow-up to an item that we presented to you at your last meeting. You recall that we briefed you on our plans to undertake an outdoor dining initiative on Beverly Street branded as, now branded as Dining Out in Downtown. You all indicated at that time your, your concurrence with the concept, and we, we told you at that time that we would return to you at, at this meeting with an ordinance for your consideration that would authorize retroactively the measures that we have taken to implement that initiative. I think by all accounts, the first weekend, last weekend, was a, was a large success. And Tourism Director Cheryl Wagner, who is leading that initiative, is, I believe, has some updates to provide to you and some materials to share with you. You do have the proposed ordinance as a part of your materials. And we're, after Ms. Wagner shares with you the materials that she has, we'd be happy to entertain any questions that you have about the proposed ordinance. Cheryl?
Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg, Mayor Dahl, members of council. Sorry about that. It was a huge success. Our team, the business recovery and outreach team, met with our restaurants and our retailers on Tuesday. And I just wanted to give you some of their feedback and just show you a few photos if you didn't get a chance to come down. So, this was, this was the logo that Katie Campbell produced for us. As you can see, it's not Stanton, it's not city of Stanton. Really, this was for downtown and to be a completely different initiative. The next slide. A quote from the owners of Blue Point, "The weekend was great. Guests loved the experience at Blue Point. Had many ask if we could stay, if it could stay that way all summer long. We had our third, third-best weekend since opening," which is amazing, and they served over 800 guests that weekend. These were just some, some of the comments on the city's Facebook page. You know, they hope it continues. "Blue Point looked beautiful. I hate that I missed it. Thank you for supporting our great restaurant, city council, and staff." So, I just thought you'd like to see that, and you probably, probably have on the city's Facebook page. And here's another photo. It looked really great. We had nine restaurants participate. This came from 101 West Beverly. "The dine-out in downtown event gave the 101 both a much-needed jumpstart but a significant shift in our overall business opportunity. Customers received the event well, and the 101 served over 350 guests." received the event well, and the 101 served over 350 guests." And you know how small the 101 is. Overall, we'd like to see this continue Friday through Sunday throughout the summer and early fall. It could be a significant differentiating factor that could allow all of our business to recover after their lost revenues. Chando Pizza, we had our best sales since last, since fall of last year. And then the Clock Tower, they served 410 customers, which was up 255 from the prior weekend, so their sales were up 60%. And he said they had to shut down their kitchen three times just to recover. So maybe they'll be better prepared this coming weekend. We heard from retailers as well. Latitude's extremely pleased. She said it wasn't ever overwhelming, so she didn't feel unsafe. As you know, Anna Shown-Duby is pregnant right now, and she was there all weekend. She actually said she's probably going to just stay open later, at least till 7:00. The Beverly Street Cigar Store, they saw a 55% increase in sales on Friday, 24% on Saturday, and 30% on Sunday. He said it was their dream to have Beverly closed down for this kind of activity. So I'm happy to take any questions. I've got plenty of comments from other restaurants and retailers. I just wanted to pick out a few to share with you.
Council members, do you have any questions or comments?
I'd just like to make a statement. The weather was pretty nasty, and to have that big a turnout, that's pretty good. You know, it rained a couple of the days.
It did. And, you know, and all of them said it wasn't overwhelming. It was steady. I think people were respectful, you know, of social distancing. And, you know, they're like Councilman Holmes said earlier, there were people that have come into his restaurant without masks, but our Economic Development Office, Amanda DeMayo especially, is heading up these free PPE kits from our Stanton Augusta Waynesboro MSA that our small businesses, if they apply to her, they can have.
Mayor Doll?
Yes?
I was out there, and I was impressed with the distancing that people were observing. The patrons were seated, seated at least six feet apart, in some cases more. They seemed to be having a wonderful time. People seemed to be so ready to get the heck out of their house and enjoy some of our restaurants. And, you know, the, just the excitement was palpable. So I want to commend you and the restaurants who participated. This seems like such a creative solution. I hope that it will help them earn back some of the revenue they've lost.
I had a question. With regard to the comments you've received, expressing the hope that we would continue doing this throughout the summer, I know it's early in the game yet, and you're still assessing the success of this particular initiative, but have you, have you started thinking about that, or has the city manager started thinking about that, or is that just something for down the road?
You know, we know that it's been requested, and I've been working for the City of Stanton for almost 14 years now, and it's probably been requested every year to do this. So, you know, we're trying it out right now. I think Steve may want to speak to that, but we're going to really just see how it goes. I don't think it's a permanent type of thing. But, but I think it can really, I think it is really helping our, our businesses right now, and restaurants and retailers.
Mr. Rosenberg?
So just to add on to Cheryl's comments, Phase Two of the Commonwealth of Virginia's reopening plan began last Friday, so we're a week into it. When the governor initially announced the reopening plan several weeks ago, he estimated that this phase that we're in now would last two to four weeks. During that entire phase, restaurants are limited in the use of their indoor seating to 50% of capacity. So I don't think that we will cease the initiative until the state progresses to Phase Three. At that time, we anticipate that restaurants will be permitted to use 100% of their capacity, and we will make an evaluation at that point whether it makes sense to continue to provide additional capacity on the outside, or to bring the initiative to a conclusion. So I'm comfortable committing at this point that it will, it will continue at least through the expiration of the state's Phase Two of the reopening plan. And the other thing that I want to share with you is that Cheryl and her group, you know, had an after-event meeting with both the, well, I guess it was a combined meeting with both restaurants and retailers earlier this week. So we made it through to Sunday evening, and then early, early in the week, Cheryl convened a meeting to get feedback from the downtown business community, and with that feedback, we'll be making adjustments for the coming weekend. And I believe that it's Cheryl's intention to continue that kind of open communication from the, from the outset. It's been very much a stakeholder-driven initiative, and that will continue as long as we continue the initiative.
I have one more question, Mayor Doll.
Dr. Harrington?
I just want, I was just wondering if any other restaurants or retailers in any other part of the city elected to try to present a locally appropriate version of this initiative themselves. Did this, anything like this happen anywhere else in town?
Well, Councilman Holmes called me last week, and we talked about him doing some outdoor dining, which you've started. And then Billy has, Mr. Vaughn has been working with The Depot Grill. We have heard from Taste of India. I know Chicano Boy is also doing some additional outdoor seating. So I think it was, you know, those folks that had that capacity were able to do, to do this, whereas Beverly Street, they don't have parking lots, you know, they don't have private parking where they can, where they can spill out. So this was our assistance for them. But, you know, the next step is how can we help some other businesses in town? And we, like Mr. Rosenberg said, we have a group of stakeholders that we've been talking to since the beginning, when we started this stabilization group. And it's a varied group of folks. It's the YMCA, it's, you know, McDonough Toyota, and it's restaurants and retail and all of that kind of thing. This was just the first initiative that they proposed, and we've gotten through our first weekend, and I think it was successful. So we're looking forward to their, to more suggestions from those folks.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right. I think I heard Ms. Mead.
Jim actually asked the same question that I was going to ask.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments?
Mayor Doll, this is Terry Holmes. Did we have anybody complain, or any, were there any complaints from any businesses downtown or about, about the?
We did have one restaurant that wasn't on Beverly that did complain about what were we going to do next? And, and that's what we're trying to, we're trying to figure out. And, you know, it was, and we completely understand their point of view, and that's what we want to do. We want to help, or at least assist, you know, some of our other businesses as they reopen. We just got to figure out how to do that. This, this was just something that, I mean, it was, it was difficult to do, but it came pretty, the idea came pretty easy. So.
Were there a lot of, I mean, what kind of costs, Steve, are we incurring? Do you have any idea just by closing the streets off? And, I mean, I'm saying it's worth it. I think it's worth it for the business. I'm just kind of curious from my own.
I don't have that information readily available, Mr. Holmes, but we can try to quantify it and get something to all of you.
I think it's a great idea. I tell you, I mean, I wished I'd have been ready to go Friday because it cost me sales this weekend, but, but I think it's a, it's a, for a lot of these places, especially like Chando Pizza and places that are so small, you know, you really don't have that choke point where you're going in and out, you know, so it really helps with the flow a bit.
All right. So this is item B that we'll, we'll be having a public hearing on. We can move now on to item C, introduction and public hearing of an ordinance to amend the FY 2020 budget ordinance for the City of Stanton by adding budget amendment number three. Mr. Rosenberg?
Madam Mayor, Phil Chair, the city's chief finance officer, will present this item.
Madam Mayor, members of council, it's an honor to serve you this evening. Tonight, we are here to introduce budget amendment number three for FY 2020. Budget number three totals $2,363,582, and it does require a public hearing that's being held this evening. The city portion of this budget amendment equals $2,320,846. The school portion of the budget amendment equals $42,736. Details have been summarized in your packet and was reviewed during the work session. General fund details include a $1.4 million transfer from the CIP fund into the general fund to cover projected revenue shortfalls associated with the COVID-19 virus shutdown. $2.1 million in CARES Act funding received by the city on June 1st, 2020 is also included. These funds are currently being coded to a COVID contingency account and will be used to reimburse the city for allowable costs. Unspent funds at the end of FY 2020 will roll into the city's fund balance and will require additional appropriation from council on FY 21 in order to be spent. Finally, we have $145,000 in additional requests for task force funding, insurance recoveries, and multiple grant awards. The CIP fund is being adjusted $1.4 million to transfer monies back to the general fund to cover revenue shortfalls for the COVID-19 virus, and the $42,000 in the education fund is for equity fund contributions and grant throughups. The city manager has recommended the introduction of this budget amendment.
Thank you. Are there any questions about this? If not, I would entertain a motion at this time to introduce this ordinance prior to the public hearing.
Mayor Doll?
Vice Mayor Kyer?
I move to introduce an ordinance amending the, trying to see this small screen, this fiscal year 2020 budget by adding budget amendment number three totaling $2,363,582, and the council conduct a public hearing of the ordinance.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Ms. Simmons, would you call the roll, please?
Dr. Harrington?
Aye.
Ms. Oaks? Ms. Oaks?
Aye.
Mayor Doll?
Aye.
Dr. Curran?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kyer?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We'll now move to item D on the regular meeting agenda, which is introduction and public hearing of amendments to fire prevention code. Mr. Rosenberg?
Madam Mayor, Deputy Fire Marshal Perry Weller will present this item.
Madam Mayor, members of council, Deputy Chief Weller, as you see by the documents in front of you, the staff recommends the proposed changes to set fees comparable with other localities in the state Fire Marshal's Office fee schedule. By adopting the Fire Prevention Code, we're allowed to set fees for certain operational permits, and that's what we're requesting, that we increase some of these fees due to the demand for services from the city's Fire Marshal's Office, has steadily increased since 2015, when the last fee increases were instituted. Most of the fee increases are proposed to account for the increased amount of time required to review permit applications, conduct site inspections, and to attend special events in a standby capacity such as fairs, other special events, fireworks displays, and underground and above-ground tank removal. And I'd be glad to entertain any questions that any council members may have at this time.
Council members, do you have any questions or comments? All right. Seeing, seeing no hands raised, I would entertain a motion prior to the public hearing on this item.
Mayor Doll?
Dr. Harrington?
I move that City Council introduce the ordinance as presented, I'm sorry, and that council conduct a public hearing of the ordinance.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks. Any further discussion? If not, Ms. Simmons, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Oaks?
Aye.
Mayor Doll?
Aye.
Dr. Curran?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kyer?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Dr. Harrington?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mayor Doll, I'm sorry, I'm having some technical problems with my iPad. It's just went completely blank. I don't, I'm not quite sure what happened.
I can see you, though.
Not my computer, my iPad, my, with the agenda, and I'm not quite sure what happened. Well, maybe, maybe it's back. Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. We're, we're going to, to have a public hearing that will include all four of these items. So I'll give you the toll-free number to call if you haven't already. It's 844-854-2222. And when prompted, enter the access code for the meeting, 619-358, followed by the pound sign. So at this time, I will now call, I'll now open a public hearing for the request by William Wade Gibbs for a special use permit to utilize a portion of 40 Woodley Road for horticultural use. I will now call, open the public hearing for an emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to temporarily close public streets, on-street parking, sidewalks, other public ways, and public spaces to public use. I will call, open the public hearing of an ordinance to amend the FY 2020 budget ordinance for the City of Stanton by adding budget amendment number three, and I will call, open the public hearing of amendments to fire prevention code. So I believe we have some callers on the line, so they can go ahead and speak. The first caller. All right. We're moving to the second caller.
Hi, my name is Allison Proffeta. I live at 402 Faria Court, and I just wanted to say in regards to the special ordinance related to businesses opening, being able to serve downtown, because, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Oh, related to the closing of Beverly Street. I just want to thank the city for being creative and thinking outside the box and helping support small business. And I hope that you will continue to do so in whatever ways are safe, both for the businesses and for the public at large. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move now to the third caller. The next caller may speak now. The third caller is live and ready to speak now.
Madam Mayor, this is Mr. Rosenberg. If I can try this to try to help the callers. The person whose number ends in the digits 68 is live and invited to comment.
We're not hearing anything from the caller whose phone number ended in 68. So without hearing anything, we're going to have to move on to the next caller. All right, the next caller?
Ballin' Jennings Street 32.
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, about Ballin' Jennings Street, Ballin' Jennings Street 32, Sharon Lane Stanton. I support all four items, and I especially want to give Mr. Gibbs great support on his project and vision the best. Thank you much.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll move on to the next caller.
Hi, this is William Wade Gibbs at 40 Woodley Road. And I'm the one who's asking for the sub for the five acres up here. This has been quite an experience. Learning curve for me has been very steep. When I first started, I wanted to put some hemp or some grapes in there. At the land survey, just determined which would work and discovered that grapes, although they would work well, the hemp would work better with less labor. I understand my neighbors' medicines and their complaints and the smell, the pesticides, the heavy machinery, the driveway, those things that I think we've addressed specifically by reducing the amount down to 100 plants. This is more an experiment than to provide CBD oil for my wife and myself, who we have found it very efficacious. I appreciate your patience and letting me go through the six-month process. And I hope that this will work, and in three years, I'll come back and maybe expand it a little bit. But we'll find out about that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're moving on to the next caller, and it ends in 82. So the next caller's phone number ends in an 82.
This is Mary Satterfield on 311 North Coulter. And I wanted to speak to the dining out in downtown. I have a couple of questions. What I wonder is, after phase two is over, why can't we continue? And I figured there must be some reason, so I'm wondering what the drawbacks to the system are. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next caller ends in 00. You're ready to speak.
I'm sorry, I spoke already, and I just called back so that I could participate in public comments at the end.
Okay.
Zach, can we put that call on hold then for a public comment?
All right, we'll move on to the next caller whose phone number ends in 73.
Hi, this is Leah Wallace. I live at 16 Fayette Street. I'm wondering whether the city of Stanton is considering renaming any of the public monuments that have been named after Confederate warriors, particularly the Stonewall Brigade Bandstand, especially in light of the comments made by Governor Lawson last week that the state of Virginia would be removing all of its Confederate monuments in order to support the dismantling of white supremacy in this country. And I would love to see our community take up that initiative and do the same and rename the monuments in our town. The Stonewall Brigade Bandstand has a long history that actually starts with the name that wasn't the Stonewall Brigade Bandstand. So I'm wondering what the city council is thinking about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next caller for the public hearings, the phone number ends in 47. You're ready to speak?
Yes, Ballin' Jennings Street 32, Sharon Lane Stanton. I want to know, I support all of the amendments. And I definitely wish Mr. Gibbs on amendment one his very much success. Marijuana, whatever you want to call it, should never have been maybe illegal in the first place. Thank you much.
Thank you. All right, the next caller, their phone number ends in 68. Are you ready to speak?
I sure am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, this is Mitch Narduzzi. I'm not for sure if this is the appropriate platform or time to call in, but I just wanted to reach out to thank the city council for appointing me to the Valley Community Services Board as their liaison. As you know, it's something that I just have a passion for, not only for our justice of law population and mental health services, but I have a very personal story as a consumer of their services. So I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to serve the city and to represent the people that need the services. And I will work really, really hard over the next three years to figure out how we can best serve our community. So just thank you so much for the opportunity. I just really appreciate it and wanted to let you guys know.
Thank you. So this is a public hearing, and the next caller, the phone number ends in 31. I think we've, we may have lost that one. Okay, they, perhaps they're waiting for matters from the public, and they'll call back. All right, do we have another caller here and whose phone number ends in 47?
Yes, Ballin' Jennings Street 32, Sharon Lane Stanton. Again, I already, I've already talked once, but again, I support all four amendments. And again, I want to wish Mr. Gibbs the best success on his venture. Thank you much.
All right, thanks. And we have another caller, and the phone number ends in 36. It's your turn to speak.
Hi, I just wanted to clarify the structure here. I had a comment unrelated to the four amendments. Is there time for that at the end, or is there time for that now?
Are you, are you really waiting for matters from the public?
That's what I think I'm waiting for. I just wanted to make sure I have the online structure right, that that would be at the end.
That's correct. So if you want to stay on, on hold, then we can talk to you at the end.
Okay, I can do that. Thank you.
All right. So do we have any other callers for the public hearings?
It looks like that's it, Madam Mayor.
All right. All right, with everyone having been heard for the public hearings, all four of them, I now call them all closed. And at this time, we need to go back to item A, which is the public hearing and consideration of a request by William Wade Gibbs for a special use permit to utilize a portion of 40 Woodley Road for horticultural use. And I would entertain a motion now that we've completed the public hearing.
Mayor Dahl?
I didn't, I didn't catch who it was. Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Okay.
I move that council approve the special use permit for 40 Woodley Road with the conditions as recommended by the planning commission.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, before you entertain the second, can I remind council and Mr. Holmes that Mr. Rhodes during his briefing shared with you an additional condition proposed by staff? And I would invite Mr. Holmes, if he's so inclined, to restate his motion to, to make reference to that additional condition.
About the dynamiting or explosive? Yes, okay. I move that council approve the special use permit for 40 Woodley Road with the conditions as recommended by the planning commission, and in addition, no use of any explosive.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Ms. Simmons, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Dr. Harrington?
Aye.
Ms. Oaks?
Aye.
Mayor Dahl?
Aye.
Dr. Curran?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now we will need to move to item B. And we've had the public hearing, and so now we are going to discuss and entertain a motion for the emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to temporarily close public streets, on-street parking, sidewalks, other public ways, and public spaces to public use.
Mayor Dahl?
Ms. Mead?
I move that council adopt the proposed ordinance authorizing the city manager to temporarily close public streets, on-street parking, sidewalks, other public ways, and public spaces to public use as part of yet additional efforts of the city of Stanton in the recovery process and even beyond the current circumstances to promote added flexibility and responsiveness, both as to business and others in the future in the management of the city as presented.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Dr. Harrington?
I was just going to second it.
Oh, second it, okay. I was ahead of you with the, with the hand signal.
I was behind you.
So any further discussion at this time? If not, Ms. Simmons, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Dr. Harrington?
Aye.
Ms. Oaks?
Aye.
Mayor Dahl?
Aye.
Dr. Curran?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kyer?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And so I'll, I'll point out that item C and D, that we also had public hearings on, that was to introduce this. And those, both of those matters will be taken up at our next council meeting. So now we can move on to item E, which is consideration of a resolution supporting approval of COPN request number VA-8511, Centerra RMH to Virginia State Health Commissioner, Mr., I believe Ms. Murgar.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Dahl, members of council. I'll just do a quick overview of this item again for everyone's benefit. Centerra RMH Medical Center has applied to the Virginia Department of Health for a certificate of public need for a new imaging facilities, facility to be included as part of a new outpatient pavilion in the city of Stanton, a community way, which is the former site of Ryan's Steakhouse. The application proposes one MRI scanner and one CT scanner, which will enhance the level of service to Centerra RMH Medical Center service area. Centerra has requested that city council adopt a resolution, which is attached, expressing its support for the application. And on, at the May 28th work session, you heard a formal presentation by Centerra. During that regular meeting of that same meeting evening, council made a motion to consider this request tonight at this meeting. I asked city council if you needed any more information. And so let me just quickly go over that additional information that's also in your packet that you reviewed. One was providing a more detailed estimate of taxes that would be received by the city. And while these are all estimates, these are based on the best information that our staff had. So on the real estate taxes, I spoke to our assessor. And based on the information that he had and trends in local and commercial real estate, he would estimate that the project would have an assessed value between 2.7 million and 3 million. And this would translate roughly to 25, just over 25,000 to a little over 28,000 in real estate tax revenue per year. And currently, the site is assessed at just over 664,000 and generates annual revenue of $6,313 a year. Regarding personal property taxes, I spoke to the commissioner of revenue, and based on the information provided, she, she estimates that the revenue could be anywhere between 70,000 and 90,000 annually, depending on the classification of property and on the assessed value of that property. And as that equipment is depreciated, we would be looking at probably about $50,000, which would be a pretty stable amount a year as that equipment ages over time. The second question related to House Centerra will be recruiting employees, particularly people that live within the city of Stanton. And they, they indicated to me that they do intend to recruit necessary positions from the city as best they can. Remember that the average salary they'd be offering is around the 77,000. They suggested that they would be posting job opportunities online and on numerous job boards, including the Stanton Newsletter and other local publications, and would advertise these positions on local television outlets where appropriate. They also wanted to point out that they have a collaborative relationship with JMU, Eastern Menonah University, and Blue Ridge Community College, which each has significant enrollment from the city of Stanton and surrounding areas, and work with each of those organizations for the training side, you know, to have folks trained for these types of jobs. And they recruit heavily from those communities. And then lastly, they wanted to make you aware that of their 477 employees, 116 reside within the city of Stanton currently. So you have the attached resolution before you. And similar to the previous meeting, you have several options in front of you. One is that you may decide to entertain a motion to consider formally the attached resolution and take a vote, or decline to approve this request and take no action. And with that, I will, I will stop talking now. So thank you. Finished my remarks.
Thanks. Council members, do you have any additional questions or comments at this time? Council members, do you have any additional questions or comments at this time? If not, we do have a decision to make. Do we decline to approve this and take no action? Or do we entertain a motion to approve it? And then it'll be an up or down vote. And we can do either of those two options. Does anyone have a preference?
Mayor Doll. This is Councilwoman Mead. I think that we should decline to approve the Centerra request. And for a couple of reasons. I acknowledge that the tax revenue is tempting in the short run. But what they're offering to do, what Centerra is planning to do, is not to increase, it's not an increase in demand for services. It's not making the pie bigger. It's just taking a slice out of Augusta Health's business and other independent small businesses in Stanton and in this area. Augusta Health is a community-led and community-run hospital. It provides needed health care in our community to low-income residents and supports, for instance, our bright transportation system. And it makes considerable financial contributions to the community through Augusta Health Foundation. The hospital was an investment that made by our communities years ago when two hospitals were closed to create Augusta Health. And I think we should not risk damaging the business that Augusta Health does in our community by adding another competitor. And furthermore, I think Centerra is a regional hospital chain. It's headquartered in Tidewater. They have no local board representation. And Augusta Health is run by people who live in this community and who understand what our community needs. So I would decline to approve the Centerra request.
All right, with that being said, I'm just going to run down through everybody's names and see if everybody's thoughts on that. So Ms. Oaks.
All right, the earth is about to shake. I agree with Councilwoman Mead completely. I am in agreement with her. We should decline this. My concern is that we have several citizens that do work for Augusta Health. And this could indeed potentially cause them to lose their livelihood. So I'm in agreement to decline to approve this request and take no action.
Mr. Holmes.
As much as I would like to have the tax revenue, I agree with Ms. Mead and Ms. Oaks.
All right, Dr. Curran.
I agree. The tax revenue is far outweighed by the many benefits that Augusta Health has provided to our community for so long. And they're our hospital. We should stick to them.
Dr. Harrington.
Feel the same way. I think this would undermine the long-term health of our hometown hospital, Augusta Health, and that we should be concerned with contributing to their overall well-being because that's our well-being. So I would agree with everybody so far.
All right, Vice Mayor Kyer.
I would also agree to decline the request.
All right, thanks. And I as well would not want to support this in opposition to our Augusta Health plan for the imaging center. I believe strongly in a community hospital. And they're getting pretty rare these days. But there's a different level of service that I believe you get when it's your own community hospital. So with that being said, we've taken care of that. We are declining to take action on that. All right, I had to find the next page. It's always a bad sign when your agenda is multiple pages. Item F, consideration of an ordinance concerning powers and duties of chief finance officer and purchases and adoption of federal grants policy. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Treier will present this item.
Sorry about that. Madam Mayor, members of council, it's an honor to be back this evening. Tonight, we will be asking council to approve minor updates to three city codes, which will specifically direct staff to follow federal statutes as they apply, as well as our state and local statutes. The following code updates are requested. Code 2.45.020, general powers and duties of the chief financial officer. Adds federal statutes to the list of state statutes, city ordinance, and city manager directives to be followed by the city's chief financial officer. Code 2.45.120, purchasing agents and purchases generally. Amendment includes increasing the minimum amount for which records of successful quoted bids or quotations must be maintained from $1,000 to $10,000. This change is requested to remain consistent with state and federal policies. Code 2.45.130, purchases to be compliant with state law, adds federal to the list of state statutes, city ordinance, and city manager directives to be followed by the city. In addition, we will be asking council to formally incorporate the federal grants policy into policy 2.45.130. This policy has been reviewed and recommended by our auditors to ensure federal grant compliance. This is a 15-page document, which you were briefed on during the work session.
You're on mute, Mayor Doll. You're on mute.
Are there any questions by council members? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor Doll.
Ms. Mead.
I move that council adopt an ordinance amending, restating, and reordaining sections 2.45.020, 2.45.120, and 2.45.130 as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second, Mayor Doll. Terry Holmes.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ms. Simmons, would you call the roll, please?
Dr. Curran.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kyer.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Dr. Harrington.
Aye.
Ms. Oaks.
Aye.
Mayor Doll.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to item G, consideration of substantial amendment to the FY 2019 Annual Action Plan to allocate additional U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, CBBG CV funds awarded to the city of Stanton under the CARES Act. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, Billy Vaughn, the city's community development director, will present this item.
Madam Mayor, this is Billy Vaughn. As I presented to you in the work session, the city has received a notification of receiving $207,590 in CARES Act funding. And in order to receive that funding, the next step is for the approval of a substantial amendment to the FY 19 Annual Action Plan. In doing so, we're required to develop a plan and strategy to prioritize the needs of low-modern income persons in the city. We have reached out to 14 local agencies and received funding requests from eight of those agencies. Upon review, it's been determined that five agencies clearly meet the CARES Act guidelines for funding as they address rental, utility, and mortgage assistance to prevent homelessness, shelter operations, food banks, health, and legal services. And I'll just quickly go over those five agencies. Salvation Army Homeless Prevention Program, benefiting 200 LMI persons with a budget of $40,000. Also Salvation Army Pew Distribution Program, benefiting 800 low-modern income persons with a budget of $9,482. Community Foundation Homeless Prevention Program, benefiting 20 LMI persons with a budget of $26,950. Blue Ridge Legal Services, providing legal aid, benefiting 20 LMI persons with a budget of $25,000. Valley Mission, providing staff support for emergency services, 46 LMI persons benefiting with a budget of $30,000. And last, the Central Shandell Health District, with education and resources for LMI's, benefiting up to 500 persons with a budget of $35,000. And then the remaining is the administrative budget of 20% of the total, which comes to $41,518. With that, we're requesting approval of the substantial amendment to the FY 19 Annual Action Plan and also to authorize city manager to execute all of the sub-recipient agreements associated with the HUD CBG funding.
All right, council members, do you have any questions or comments about this? And as I stated in the work session, I'll be abstaining from voting on this. Not that I have a personal interest in any transaction, but as an abundance of caution and allay any appearance of conflict of interest because of Blue Ridge Legal Services listed as one of the grantees. So if there are no other questions, I would entertain a motion at this time.
Mayor Doll, this is Councilwoman Mead.
Ms. Mead.
I move that city council approve the substantial amendment to the FY 2019 Annual Action Plan for CARES Act CBBG in response to the COVID-19 emergency and authorize the city manager to execute the sub-recipient agreements with agencies recommended to receive HUD CBG funds.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Curran. Any further discussion? Ms. Simmons, would you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Kyer.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes. Unmute, please.
Aye.
Thank you. Dr. Harrington.
Aye.
Ms. Oaks.
Aye.
Dr. Curran.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We'll move on. Did someone say anything? Okay. Item H is the discussion and consideration of uncodified ordinance to enlarge the time for payment of taxes due under the provisions of Sections 3.10.040 of Stanton City Code from June 20, 2020 to July 13, 2020. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This ordinance that's before you for consideration would essentially provide additional time for property owners to pay their real estate taxes without a penalty. The city treasurer complied with the technical requirement of the state code to provide at least 14 days between the date the notices are mailed and the due date. But as is summarized in the briefing, the 17-day period that exists this year in 2020 is shorter than that period has been in years past. And there are several reasons that the period is shorter. But in recognition that after reaching out to each of you, we have brought forward this ordinance, which would provide for a comparable period of time as in prior years between the date of mailing of the bills and the date for payment. And so the bills that were mailed have a due date printed on them of June 20. But if council adopts the ordinance before you, taxpayers would have until July 13 in order to pay the taxes without penalty. And we will, if the ordinance is approved, appropriately publicize that information so taxpayers are aware that they have additional time in which to make the payment without penalty. So, you know, payments made by July 13 would be made without penalty. Payments made July 14 or subsequently would be subject to the 10% late payment penalty. City Treasurer Rick Johnson is also with us on the Zoom platform, having called in. And we are both available to answer any questions that you have.
All right, thank you. Council members, do you have any questions? If there are no questions, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor Doll, this is Andrea Oaks.
Ms. Oaks.
I move that council adopt an uncodified ordinance to enlarge the time for payment of taxes due under the provisions of Section 3.10.040 of Stanton City Code from June 20, 2020 to July 13, 2020, as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ms. Simmons, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Dr. Harrington.
Aye.
Ms. Oaks.
Aye.
Mayor Doll.
Aye.
Dr. Curran.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kyer.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. We've added item I to our agenda tonight, and that is regarding to the potential council statement. I wonder if you want me to read it at this time? And then we could entertain a motion? Head nod?
Mayor Doll, Ovi Kyer, I would say yes. Let's read it, please.
All right. So this is the proposed statement from city council. "As a council, we condemn, in the strongest possible words, the horrifying examples of racially motivated violence and injustice, often by those who are sworn to protect, that continue to take place in communities across our country. The murder of George Floyd by a Minneapolis police officer who knelt on his neck while he lay helpless on the ground is the most recent atrocity against a black American that has left us appalled, angered, and heartbroken. Structural racism that has played out against generations of black individuals and families must be confronted and dismantled to achieve the equal protection, freedom, access, and representation deserved by all individuals. We appreciate the passionate dialogue that is happening right now on the streets and in the homes of Stanton and other communities and support peaceful expressions of anger, pain, and grieving as necessary and justifiable calls for action and pushes for continued change and improvement." In his recent statement, Stanton Police Chief Jim Williams expressed his extreme emotion at the murder of George Floyd in saying that, "This disturbing image is one that I personally will never forget. I truly cannot imagine the pain and anguish that must be felt by Mr. Floyd's family and friends. We commend those police officers who share Chief Williams' view that the basic principles of law enforcement would never condone police officers committing such an atrocity or any racially motivated injustice, and who reflect that in their everyday interactions. We also appreciate Chief Williams' acknowledgement that the Stanton Police Department is not perfect and support his determination to continue to strive to be a police department our community can trust to carry out our vital mission. As a council, we express our absolute expectation that law enforcement officers, and indeed all city employees, will be held immediately accountable for any instances of misconduct that reflect racially motivated bias. City councils adopted 2030 vision expresses our collective hope that Stanton is a vibrant, exciting, and welcoming community that is built on a diverse population. We cannot be the city we aspire to be when our friends, neighbors, coworkers, and our own families are victims of unequal treatment due to their race." of unequal treatment due to their race. Our city must examine in an honest way how goals in our vision like inclusivity and diversity can be achieved in the face of discriminatory actions that have a sad and enduring history across our country and indeed closer to home. As a council, we understand that this will require courage, compassion, constant attention, and vigilance, and we pledge to do this hard work in dialogue with all persons who seek resolutions through open communications, shared accountability, and peaceful actions. While we do not have all the answers right at this moment, we will immediately consider specific initiatives that will help the city ensure fair and equitable treatment of all Stanton residents and visitors, including in interactions with law enforcement. We stand in solidarity with those who insist on immediate, meaningful action to address the longstanding and deeply entrenched institutional racism in our country, and dedicate ourselves to the critical work of supporting equity, diversity, and inclusion in the city of Stanton." And with that statement, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor Doll?
Vice Mayor Kyer?
I would like to move that we accept the statement presented on behalf of City Council as our statement to fight and end racism in our community.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Harrington, thank you. Any further discussion?
Mayor Doll?
Dr. Harrington?
Just a quick word of thanks to those who conspired to craft that statement. I think it's a very powerful statement, and I'm proud to be a part of it.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mayor Doll?
Mr. Holmes?
I'd just like to also add that, you know, Ophi had one of the Bridge things last weekend, and you should have saw the number of people there. There was a lot of people from Stanton out there supporting this whole idea, and I think it's great.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, Ms. Simmons, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Dr. Harrington.
Aye.
Ms. Oaks.
Aye.
Mayor Doll.
Aye.
Dr. Curran.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kyer.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And with that approval, this statement will go out on the city's social media website, and it will be published as many places as we can put it, so that everyone knows where we stand. So at this time, we will move on to matters from the City Manager. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, I have nothing more to share with Council this evening.
All right. Next, we have matters from the public. Do we have people still hanging on there? All right, so we have a caller, and the phone number ends in 00. You are up next to speak. Please give your name and address.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, it's Allison Prasata for 02 Barrier Court. I want to thank you for the statement that you just read. I'm in particular interested in speaking about a community oversight board for our police, our fire department, and sheriff's office. I was extremely disappointed that Sheriff Robertson did not attend the work session today to speak to Council, and I hope whatever else he was attending is of dire importance. I want to thank Chief Garber and Chief Williams, both of them for speaking. If there's one thing I've learned as a white woman in the past few years, it is that it is not enough to not be racist. We need to be anti-racist if what we want to do is dismantle this system of oppression and marginalization. I, in particular, would like to know from Chief Williams about the, and Chief Garber, about the ongoing trainings that they spoke of, how often they are held, who conducts them, and how often they are led by Black and/or Indigenous and/or people of color. There is a culture that exists within law enforcement, and I speak to this as someone who was raised in a family of law enforcement officers. Chief Williams spoke about an officer that was fired for making a statement about wanting to throat punch an individual. What he didn't address was, was that statement reported by the other officer he said it to or by the individual that Chief Williams said overheard that threat? And that is the type of culture that exists. And if we want to eliminate that, I would advise the city to immediately begin a formation of a citizen review board, in particular, if, as Chief Williams spoke to, we are also worried about collective bargaining, which he mentioned would be a potential threat to these ongoing trainings, and which would most likely block him from firing that officer. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Okay, our next caller, phone number ending in 36.
Hello, my name is Megan Kramer. I am at 104 Hebron Road in Stanton. Thank you for hearing us from us today. I really appreciate the statement that you all just made and the strong wording. I'm currently part of a coalition of 150 concerned citizens that have been brainstorming together different ways to make our community safer, stronger, and more unified in light of the George Floyd tragedy and all the movements happening across the country. We would like to advocate for instituting a Marcus Alert in our area. If you don't know what a Marcus Alert is, in 2018, Marcus David Peters, a local teacher in Richmond, was killed during a law enforcement stop unarmed, completely naked, and having a mental breakdown. His family began activism work and advocating for a Marcus Alert in Richmond. This policy would have mental health professionals on staff for the police department, and in the event of a suspected mental health crisis or wellness check, dispatch would send the mental health professionals, and they would be called to the scene first, and police would only be called as backup if non-lethal force was needed. Our police have been acting as social workers for too long, and this step would keep the community safe. We've been in contact with Marcus David Peters' family, particularly his sister, Princess Blanding, and she has given us permission and blessing to use his name locally if we instituted a similar policy. I wanted to read a statement from a local autistic woman of color, T Monet, and her statement is, "Autistic people have what are called meltdowns, which are neurological emergencies. They are caused by an overload of our senses, which are more sensitive and connected in different ways than autistic people. A lot of us cannot process spoken language or overlapping voices or loud scene in general in this state. Some of us scream, some of us run, some of us flail, cover our ears, need to sit or lay on the ground, and become inconsolable from physical touch, and we shut down and become unresponsive. The majority of police are already not trained to deal with that. The majority of police already can't decipher a person on drugs from an autistic person engaging in stimming and echolalia. We must keep our disabled community members safe and our police safe from missteps by not putting them directly in situations that are totally outside of their wheelhouse. So we suggest reallocating current police budget towards putting mental health professionals on staff and putting this into place. Thank you."
Thank you. Okay, the next caller's phone number ends in 47. Are you ready to speak? Please give your name and address. Phone ending in 47. We're going to move on to the next caller, whose phone number ends in 96. Next caller, whose phone number ends with 96.
Yes, that's the John Hutchison. I live at 118 Madison Place in Stanton. I'm the Executive Director of Valley Conservation Council, a longtime Stanton nonprofit organization, and I am calling to say that I hope you all will renew the agricultural and forestal districts for the full 10-year term when that comes back up. I think the districts are a steal for the cities, especially the Bell's Lane District, which provides a free park used by thousands of people a week. If that land was to fall to development, it would cost the city a fortune in services that would far outstrip the meager taxes that are foregone keeping it in open space. And I hope you all look to renew the districts for the 10-year period. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, our next caller, the phone number ends in 14. Next caller ending in 14. Is the next caller ready to speak? The phone number ends in 14. I don't hear any response from that caller. The next caller, the phone number ends with 87.
Thank you. My name is Joel Marie Garcia. I live at 411 Austin Ave. First, I want to thank you for your statement that you made earlier. I'm also a part of the Coalition of 150 Concerned Citizens, and I would like to suggest that the Council consider the addition of a community oversight board to receive and investigate complaints about the Stanton Police Department and the Sheriff's Office. They should have knowledge of internal investigations to help ensure protocol is being followed. This would increase public confidence in the police, and it could create an ally for the Stanton Police Department and the Sheriff's Office to calm the public if all protocols are being followed. It will also increase the feeling of transparency with the community, because currently, records are only available annually. And we must be ahead of the curve to set up accountability before a major incident happens in Stanton. The following statement is from the U.S. Department of Justice, the Office of Community Oriented Policing Services. "While some agencies may view citizen review as a sign of mistrust or interference from the community, generally, citizen review proposals are not negative in character, but an outreach from the community to help departments respond objectively to different internal situations. If an allegation of police misconduct occurs, the community may begin to lack faith in the internal affairs process. The public then often becomes uncomfortable with law enforcement, policing itself, and may want more involvement in the process. We suggest reallocating current police budget towards these measures rather than increasing the budget, and we would really appreciate your support and are happy to continue working with you and researching all of these issues with you as well. Thank you."
Thank you. All right, the next caller, the phone number ends in 67.
Hello, my name is Heron Kennedy. I'm at 826 North Augusta Street in Stanton. I'm also a part of the local coalition of 150 people, and I would like to suggest that we join the My Brothers Keeper Alliance by becoming a My Brothers Keeper community, which President Obama encouraged during his recent address to the nation. My Brothers Keeper, or NDK, is a call to action supporting success and opportunities for young men of color. The goal is to support these young men in concrete ways that will create lasting change and a culture of support and appreciation for Black men. Charlottesville has been an NDK community since 2014. They are currently the only one in Virginia, and it would be up to primarily Mayor Doll to follow suit and take the pledge to support these young men here in Stanton. For more details on this and to take the NDK mayoral pledge, you can visit obama.org/NBKA. And I would also like to say thank you for the statement from earlier, and thank you for your support.
Thank you. The next caller, phone number ends in 08.
Hi, this is Casey Tucker at 1809 North Drive. Wanted to thank the city for adopting the statement condemning racism and police violence, and also thank the city for inviting the chief and sheriff to speak earlier this evening. And a special thanks to Councilwoman Brenda Mead for contacting me after I reached out to everyone on City Council concerning a recent event. And finally, I would like to extend my support for a citizens' review board. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next caller, the phone number ends in 72.
Hi there, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. My name's Allison Shinigur. I'm at 507 West Beverly Street in Stanton. And first, I just wanted to extend my support for the community reviewer oversight board, as well as looking into Marcus Alert being placed in, as well as that My Brothers Keeper community also being involved in Stanton. I would like to know how you are going to enforce and how you will hold people accountable for, uh, people, meaning, you know, the police department or any people holding child in Stanton, holding them accountable for the new council statement in regards to discrimination? And I would also like to ask the question, how the police department receives funding, how it gains, and what's got the citizen to decide where and how the money is allocated. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next caller, the phone number ends in 96. I think we lost that. Yeah, they've dropped off. All right, so the next caller ends in 14. Is there someone there with a phone number ending in 14? It's your turn to speak. We're trying one last time, but I don't hear anybody, so we may have lost that person. And then we have one ending in 47. Caller ending in, phone number ending in 47.
Madam Mayor, that call may be Mr. Jennings.
Yes, I will read, express my commitment, and again, I want to thank you for your statement.
Thank you. All right, now I see the caller ending in 14. You're up next.
Hi there, I'm here. Did you say 18?
14.
Okay, my number is 18, so there must be a glitch, because a couple of times you've said this, and I heard the one you just said, I am 18, so, um, may I go ahead and speak?
Go ahead.
Thank you. This is Judy Stowe, 73rd and 8th Drive in Stanton. The usual, that was one of the, which is looking at the agendas, because I want to be firm about the certificate of need as well from city staff, and obviously, I do appreciate that, that is, this is a development issue. I do think that, so, standing in the vacuum, and not necessarily, I do think here coming into town, so I appreciate the support, the huge support that I was, I'm still, and I think that's just how good it does to me, um, second, I would just like to say, I appreciate that, with our city council, and especially our citizens, our chief of them. Have been concerned about the matters that we've all lost, we've lost in the last couple of weeks, and I think I called you there early on, just the questions that I had, because I was concerned about my, my sense of the water. With that being said, I do appreciate everything the city's doing. If there are committees that, that you, you people, especially retired educators, I am more happy, more than happy to do that. And again, thank you to everybody for the hard work.
Thank you. I don't see any more phone numbers. So with no more phone calls in the queue and no, no further business, I call this meeting adjourned.